So I'd like to say thank you very much to our three applicants who have applied for appointment to the Salem Planning Commission. This is a commission that we do hold in high regard and appreciate very much the service that people indicate that they would provide because it is a time-consuming and a very important commission. And so we especially appreciate your being willingness to come and be applicants. I'm going to start as I read -- let's see if I have my interviews here. I would like to start first with Sharon and move from my left to right and ask you each to introduce yourselves and just tell a little bit about yourself real briefly, and then we will actually go into the interviewing process. Welcome.
Wonderful. So my name is Sharon Blasey. I live and reside in Ward 7. And a little bit about myself, as you may or may not know, I recently served on the City Council.
Can you please speak up?[88.82][88.82](Laughter).
And I have not changed at all.[96.04][96.04](Laughter). I have not learned my lesson. No. I also am an employee of the State of Oregon. I work for the Oregon Audits Division conducting performance audits. I have been a resident of Salem for about 11 years now, and I just really appreciate this opportunity and look forward to answering your questions. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Welcome, Steven.
Thank you.
Yes?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilors. My name is Steve Elzinga, and I live in the southeast Salem neighborhood. I'm an attorney, and I work for the Oregon Legislature where I research and analyze policies on a variety of legislative topics such as transportation, public safety, veterans, and taxation. Prior to working for the Oregon Legislature, my primary legal experience was in appellate law, and I've previously argued before the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. I applied for a position on the Planning Commission because I believe that as someone who's fortunate enough to live and work in Salem, it's my responsibility to be an active participant in my community and to offer myself in whatever capacity. And if selected for the Planning Commission, I would have several primary focuses. The first of those is to fairly apply the code in each specific factual situation in a manner that's consistent with the policy that is set out by the City Council. The second is that I would focus on soliciting and incorporating as much public comment and input as possible from every stakeholder in each situation. And due to my legal background and my objective approach, I believe I'd be a strong addition to the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much. Sharon Geier?
I'm Sharon Geier. I've been a 20-year resident of the City of Salem. I am currently a check church secretary. I've always been interested in planning and have been interested in Salem since I came here to finish my degree in environmental studies at Willamette. I sought this degree to establish some credibility with those I served with on various boards prior to that time. Since being in Salem, I've been on the Board of Directors of Salem Audubon, the Citizens' Advisory Committee to Marion County Solid Waste. Prior to that, in another life, I was on the Citizen Advisory Committee to update the comprehensive plan for the City of Lancaster, California. I was also on the Citizens Advisory Committee to select a site for Joshua Tree Preserve within the city limits of Lancaster, California. I sought those -- the positions on those commissions because of the knowledge and insight that I gained while working as the planning associate for the premier civil engineering company in the Antelope Valley in California. And prior to that, I worked as a city planner for the City of Lancaster.
All right. Thank you very much. Each of our candidates received the same questions and completed those questions and returned those in written form to us for the record. And what I'm going to do this evening is starting on my right and your left, starting asking the first question and then ask you each to answer that question, and then the second and third. And obviously, since you've written detailed questions, I don't expect you to read those questions, but if you want to, you can, or you may just simply paraphrase. And then I would like councilors to ask questions of each of the candidates after they've answered each of the questions. Does that sound manageable to the council? That way you get to ask a question about a question that's fresh in your mind and fresh in the applicant's minds. Okay. All right. And our first question was, "The Salem Planning Commission acts as an advisory commission to the City Council with a broad scope of concern in promoting the growth and orderly development of the city of Salem. Based on this statement, explain what you see as the role of the Planning Commission." And we'll start with Mrs. Geier.
Well, the role of the Planning Commission, as I see it, is to take information provided to us by city staff and to compare that with the codes and to take public input during the public hearing, either for or against whatever the proposed project might be. I understand that we only serve in an advisory capacity, and I would be not considering my -- any personal feelings or ideas I have about development, but only comparing the codes and the public input. Thank you.
I agree with what she said, but I'll reiterate it in my own words. I think the role, the primary role of the Planning Commission is to be a neutral arbiter in applying the code to a specific set of factual circumstances. As a lawyer, I guess I would compare it to the similar to the job of a judge. The judge doesn't make the law, but the judge looks at what the law is and applies it to the case before him or her. The Planning Commission should be careful to solicit public input from all the affected stakeholders, that includes the neighbors, the Neighborhood Association, that includes the person who's applying, affected businesses. And the job is not to favor any particular party, but to weigh the concerns of all parties and try to reach a balanced result. My general approach is that I prefer consensus, and when you have a situation where you have competing concerns, often it's important to find compromises that balance the needs of all parties involved. And that should all be done in light of the fact that the City Council, as elected by the voters of Salem, is responsible for determining the policy. If there's something where I disagree with a specific way the code, where the code leads, my job is to apply the code and then -- excuse me -- and then perhaps recommend to the council to change the policy in the future. But in a specific case, it would be my responsibility to apply the code as written.
So I view the role of the Planning Commission very similar to what was described, but I see it as kind of the front line, as was described, for citizens coming forward and expressing concerns. You know, an application might be received, but I think there's more to just, you know, reviewing the application for requirements set forth by code. I think part of the role of the commission is to keep in mind the larger picture of the City of Salem. What are the goals of Salem? You know, how do decisions relating to land use and development and transportation, various things like that, how do they potentially impact where we want to be in the future as a city? And I think, you know, we've done an excellent job of that, but I think is, you know, in moving forward, we're certainly interested in more sustainable development and growth and additional urban development. You know, we have a lot of different projects that are going on right now, and I think part of the role of the commission is, you know, not just interpret the rules, but to really be mindful of where we want to be as a city and what is the policy direction that we're seeing from the council. You know, as I stated in my response, as, you know, being on the council for a brief time period but yet seeing some of the, you know, the applications that came forward, I think there was just a little bit of a disconnect between what was coming forward and what the direction of the council was. And so again, I think part of the role of the commission is to be mindful of where, you know, where the city, where we want to be, where do we want to be with land use policy and development. So I think there's certainly a broader role of the commission than just ensuring that the applications meet requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, starting with Steven, the second question is, "Pretend that you're on the Planning Commission. You receive a report for a hearing, and after reading it, you're in agreement with the applicant, and it fits your philosophy on development. During the public hearing, you receive information from the opposing side that sounds like, sounds that makes a case for denying the application. How would you resolve the conflict between the two positions, and what would your decision be?" Oh, you know what? I apologize. We were going to ask questions after each question. Does anyone have a question of the three applicants following question one? Okay. We'll go to question two. So I've just read question two, and we'll start with Steven.
Certainly. It's important for members of the Planning Commission to objectively look at every application that comes before the commission. And so that starts by before the commission meets, I will have read through all the materials relevant to the application. And I'll have obviously preliminary ideas, but it's important not to make a final decision before I've heard from those, for example, who will come in and testify publicly. So then at the meeting, I would want to listen to all the stakeholders that are involved and those who have concerns of one way or another, oppose or support the application. If there's anything I don't understand, I would ask probing questions and make sure I fully am on board with where the different positions are. If at the end of all of that, I believe that there is a strong argument for both sides, which I believe is basically what the question asked, then I think that's an opportunity to look for compromises between what's going on. If the code is not clear in how it should apply to a specific situation, then our job is to look at the overall policy that's exemplified by the code as a whole and try and apply that and look for compromises where they can be found and reach a result that is consistent with the policy set out by the City Council. If the code is clear, obviously, it doesn't really matter anything else, it's just you apply the code. And it asks, you know, about my personal beliefs on something, and again, I need to reiterate that although obviously I have personal beliefs, as an attorney, I'm very comfortable with recognizing what those beliefs are and setting them aside and applying the code as written.
Thank you. Sharon?
Thank you. I like this question because I think it demonstrates the public input into decisions that we make. And having served recently on the council, you know, we saw this, I would say, every time, every time we met. So I'm going to talk about it in the sense of, you know, what, you know, how I made decisions on council, which I think would be similar to on the Planning Commission. You know, we do a lot of, a lot of research, as you were describing, get familiar with the information, the application that's being presented, but then, you know, you come to the meeting, and the beauty of the public policy is, you know, folks can come in and they can present another side that you may not have heard. And so I think, you know, this scenario is great because it describes the reality of what actually happens. And having that opportunity for folks to come in and present, you know, an alternative opinion or view on something. So again, you know, it's not just, does an applicant, does an application meet the requirements? Does it comply with code? It really goes back to, is this where we want to move, the direction that we want to go as far as the city and development and land use issues? So in the scenario that's described, I would, you know, I think my response would be very similar. I would want to hear all of, all of the information, but in making a final decision, it would be similar to that, like I meant on the council. If there is information that's presented that's compelling, I would want to be open-minded to that and make a decision based on all of the information. So in this scenario, I think the decision that I would make would be to deny the application if there was, you know, sufficient information to support that. So, you know, not coming into a, into a meeting or looking at an application and developing a, you know, a preconceived decision, but being open to, you know, additional information as it's presented. And I think that's a very important, very important to someone on the commission, so thank you.
Thank you. And Sharon?
Communication, I think, is the key to the Planning Commission and its process. And preparation prior to the meeting so that we know what we're looking at. But allowing the public to participate is of the utmost importance if we're going to create a community in which everyone feels at home. If, well, there was a case recently before you that, for a zone change, and I realize that zone changes are different than some of the other applications that you see, there's more discretion, I believe, in a zone change. The staff had recommended approval, but the community adjacent to this project came out in force with various concerns, and the Planning Commission denied that application, which gave the applicant the opportunity to appeal it to the City Council. And I think through, in that particular case, again, the neighborhood prevailed and you denied the application. As a planning commissioner, I would hope that during the discussion phase, there might be some opportunity, if there's convincing concerns from the public, to mitigate the opposition by perhaps offering conditions of approval through the staff. Or if I just believed that the project as it was currently presented would not work well in the city, I would have to deny it.
Thank you. Are there questions by any of the councilors? Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to all three of you for wanting to serve. It's great seeing interest. The Neighborhood Association plays an important advisory role to the council and to the Planning Commission, but sometimes you really have to be careful about receiving ex parte contacts regarding an application. How do you see with those kinds of be carefuls out there at being an appointed planning commissioner? How do you see your interaction with all of the Neighborhood Associations, but particularly the one you represent? Can you speak to your involvement or your knowledge of how you would interact with your Neighborhood Association?
Shall we start with Sharon for this and then move to the other directions?
Okay. Very carefully would be how I would interact, having learned possibly the hard way. You know, and that's a, that's a really excellent point. And I think part of, you know, being appointed to a Planning Commission or anything like this, you know, each of us will have to be reminded of those challenges and, but there are ways, you know, to interact. You don't have to particularly have an interaction or a particular discussion about a specific application. You know, if you participate with your Neighborhood Associations and in your community, and you're aware of what's going on around you and land use issues and, you know, particular concerns of the various communities, and there are so many varying concerns, if you're aware of those and mindful, you can still make decisions for your community, but not just for your community. You can make decisions that impact the city as a whole, and you can still do it very carefully. But, but that's an excellent point, you know, that you can't just sit down and say, "Okay, draw me a map and show me where you want to put this, how much you want to spend," you know, things like that. But yet, you know, knowing, knowing what, you know, what are priorities in your community? What are challenges in your community? I mean, a lot of us have some very unique challenges. And so being on the Planning Commission, it would be extremely important to be mindful and aware of those concerns and challenges, and then make decisions.
Steven?
When I worked for the Arizona Attorney General, there were a couple of cases that I worked on that I was excited that I was able to be a part of, and that they were big cases that would make national news and talk about it. It's, you know, client confidentiality and legal privilege is something I'm very familiar with. And when you're looking at what I'm thinking about in a specific situation that's I know going to be coming before the Planning Commission, that's something that, you know, I shouldn't be talking about. It's important when decisions are made that we develop a full record that facilitates review by the City Council. If I'm making decisions based on information that's outside of that record, then it's really impossible for you as a council to fully evaluate the merits of that decision. And so I definitely want to be, you know, involved in the community, and I can explain things to some degree, but when it's a case that's pending before the Planning Commission, then it's just something that, you know, I'd be glad to talk about that with you after we've issued a final statement. And my decision needs to be based only on the information that's on the record because that facilitates council review. And if there's more information I think should be in the record because I have particular knowledge, I might ask a question during the Planning Commission meeting itself of one of the applicants, but it's important that every planning commissioner is working with the same information when making decisions.
Thank you. Sharon?
Well, I definitely agree with Steven. If it isn't in the record, things can really become confused. And if things go into thing, into the area of appeals and Luba, it's important that all the knowledge is in the record.
Any other questions? By councilors? We'll move along then to question three, and I am mindful of the time, so I will, I might sort of try to speed us a little bit. Third question, "Reducing the reliance on automobiles means getting people out of their cars or reducing miles driven. As it relates to planning, can it be done through expansion of mass transit routes, increasing density near services, or encouraging mixed-use neighborhoods?" I'm sorry, it's not a question. It says, "As it relates to planning, it can be done through expansion of mass transit routes, increasing density near services or including..." Excuse me. I have to apologize.[1533.65][1533.65](Laughter). I am reading someone's answer. I really apologize. All right. How do you define reduce the reliance on automobiles as it relates to planning?
Excellent short form. There we go.
Well, in addition to what you just said (laughs), that was a very good answer. I hope that was mine.[1556.41][1556.41](Laughter). You know, this is, this is a great question. It's one that certainly we're very cognizant of right now because we are in the middle of a lot of issues that, that are related to reducing the reliance on autos. But as it relates to planning, you know, and making decisions about planning and land use and development, you know, I think every application needs to be viewed from this perspective because this is such an important focus of where we want to be as a city. So, you know, does an application for development or a consideration, does it provide the opportunity for, you know, alternative modes of transportation? Where is it located? How is it connected to, say, you know, public transportation? How is the layout designed so that, again, it allows for, you know, walking and just healthier communities? We've heard a lot, I would say even just in the last year, but certainly beyond that, you know, we want to develop communities that are more sustainable within themselves. We want to create communities that folks can get out, they can walk, they can ride their bike, they can, you know, walk or bike to the grocery store, they can get downtown. So every decision that we're making, you know, and the applications that are coming forward, I think it's important for not only the Planning Commission, but, you know, city staff and city council, you know, to be informing, making it, you know, known that these are the types of, you know, priorities that we have for the city, and it's, you know, it is very important for us to, to begin to further reduce the reliance on automobiles. So I think this is something that, again, every application that comes forward should be considered for, for how it fits into that.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, Steven?
Well, every day I commute to and from work on my bike, so I fully understand and appreciate the idea that it's important for us to provide alternative modes of transportation for those that choose to utilize them. But I think the operative word there is "for those who choose." I don't think it's something that we should be forcing on everyone. I think we should be planning in a way that gives people options, that allows them to do what they choose to do, you know, empower them to make a decision. And the car is always going to be the primary mode of transportation for us in the, at least currently and in the near future. That's not going to change. So it's important to recognize and account for that, that we need to make it, you know, we need to enact policies that reduce traffic and make it easier for people to drive places, but we also need to balance that with making it easier for people to bike and walk and use mass transit. And like everything, it's everything in moderation. It's important to strike a balance. And I think that as a planning commissioner, I would certainly be cognizant of the fact through my own personal experience. I think that would make me more aware of specific issues. I would be looking at an application for a zoning change or something like that, and I would be more likely to see potential issues for people who commute by bike. But again, I'm absolutely committed to the fact that the Planning Commission is an advisory body, and it's important for me to put my personal beliefs aside when I'm making decisions. And so my personal beliefs will make me aware of issues that maybe other people would not see. not see, but it's not something where I'm going to be pushing my own choices on other people.
Thank you. And Sharon?
I believe you've all heard my response.
Yes.
Something I'd like to stress is the reduction of miles driven. And I think the planning process is vitally important in that. And to provide people an opportunity to shop, to work, to recreate near their home, I think, is something that we should be working towards. I lived in West Salem for the first 19 years I've been in Salem. And we had to cross the bridge. You want anything, you cross the bridge. And that's just an example of one community that I'm familiar with. I'm sure there are others in our lying areas of the city. So, though that is my belief, the thing we should be attempting to do to reduce miles, I do agree that that is my opinion and I have to look at things as they pertain to city policies and code.
Thank you very much. Okay. Our fourth question, are there any questions by counselors at this point? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. It's not related to bikes, okay? It's separate. I am curious, I've served on the Planning Commission, and one of the challenges I saw on it was the role of the city staff, presenting information, often reflecting, to some extent, council positions, interpreting the code, making recommendations. Are you comfortable with having attention in that relationship as a Planning Commissioner? That the staff, while they're excellent, I really, we have a really, really good planning staff, but are you comfortable pushing back if you don't agree with what you're hearing or you think there's another interpretation of the code that could be applied? That it, you can look at that code and you can see it a couple of different ways?
Yes, we're rotating. Who would be next to answer that question?
It's probably me.
Okay.
I have both presented as city staff and I have represented clients before Planning Commissions. I understand the tension that sometimes arises in those situations, and I am comfortable with it. It's actually, in my experience, easier to deal with than one irate client across the city counter.
Yeah.
All right, Stephen?
Yes, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
And Sharon?
Yes, I'm comfortable as well. And I, and I don't see it as a conflict. I see it as a, you know, a discussion. And having had experience with city staff in kind of a similar role, you know, I never felt as though there was, you know, a conflict. It was, you know, well, you know, discussions. Did you consider this? And, and my experience with city staff here in Salem is they're very open-minded, very willing to, you know, to listen to other interpretations and to really take that to heart and take that seriously and go back and look and do additional research. I mean, we've seen that obviously on City Council and I, you know, and I would expect the exact same thing for the Planning Commission. And, and I think that that would be our responsibility, not to just take it at face value if there's something we're not quite sure about or don't quite agree with or think there may be, you know, a possible alternative or other answer. But I don't think that that would be an issue on either side, but that's a really good question.
All right. Our next question is for, what do you think of Salem as it is currently laid out, i.e. land use, transportation systems, excuse me, open spaces, et cetera? And I'd like to start with Stephen this time, please.
Well, I love Salem, that's why I live here. And so, specific things I love about Salem, I really love the parks. And I've used those on many occasions. And, you know, like any city, there's always unintended consequences of planning because, you know, we're, we can't anticipate everything. So, an example I gave in my written application was the fact that we have freight trains running through my neighborhood. And, you know, that probably wasn't an issue, or it probably wasn't anticipated to be an issue when the planning was originally done, but it is now. And sometimes, you know, there's not always a good way to address that. I know that the noise agreement for the railroads is for, going to address part of that for central Salem, but it's not going to address it for where I live because I'm slightly below the noise agreement area. And so, there's always going to be things like that where, you know, I wish things could be done differently. And sometimes, you know, it's just cost prohibitive to make changes once it's already been established. But that just cements the importance of when we're looking forward and the areas that haven't been built out and planned yet, it's really important for us to comprehensively evaluate every decision that's made and make sure we listen to every member of the community because they may see something that I didn't see. The other members, the Planning Commission, may see something that I didn't see. And so, it's always important to listen to everybody else.
Thank you. Sharon?
Thank you. Well, I agree. There are a lot of things that I really love about Salem and the way it's laid out. And I, and I've really come to appreciate that so much more and particularly with regards to how we've designed and prioritized parks, how we have focused on pockets of the city that have just become, you know, incredible, you know, destination places within the city that, you know, we maybe had never even imagined previously. But I also agree that there are some challenges. You know, if you look at the map of Salem, we are, you know, we're very stretched out. And the bulk of our, our work and, you know, where we work and where we shop and things like that are located in a, you know, in a very relatively small core area. And I know that, you know, a lot of folks are trying to, trying to change that. And I think that that's a, you know, a good priority for us to have because we are spread out, we are diverse, we are across the river. And so, I think some of the challenges that we have are actually opportunities. You know, we're looking at further developing more of the outlying areas, you know, out in South Salem. You know, we're looking at additional shopping and retail and mixed-use areas out there. So, I really appreciate what we, what we have, but I think, you know, again, some of the, we do, we certainly have some challenges. We have, you know, right now, we have a very large challenge with the bridge, you know, and that's certainly more, you know, more of an issue facing you all. But, but as, you know, part of the Planning Commission, you know, we would need to be very mindful of the potential impact of that and how we move forward and how we address that and how the public perceives how we address issues like that. You know, do we listen to public input? You know, can we afford the things that we would like to do and the way we would like to develop the city? So, I think as a member of the Planning Commission, being very mindful of individual decisions and their larger impact. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Sharon?
I've been very interested in the city of Salem since moving here. I have never lived in a city that had a history. Southern California cities pop up like mushrooms and you're basically dealing with a blank slate. The city I left had 89 square miles within its urban growth area. The city itself was probably, hmm, maybe 10 square miles, even though we had about 150,000 people. I find lots of opportunities in Salem for infill, the thought of mixed use, again, as we fill out from the city's core, though it's a challenge if there are people who believe they bought into a totally residential area. But I think that as we go through the economy we're currently in, there may be some room to educate people to the benefit of having closer facilities to them. I'd look forward to being on the commission during these times. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Our fifth question is, please describe what mixed use means to you as far as a planning designation. And I'd like to start with Sharon and then move from my left to right.
Thank you. Well, I think we were just starting to talk quite a bit about mixed use and the, how it, how it relates to planning designation. The thing that I've seen and observed in the last year is we have very high standards for mixed use. And I think as a member of the Planning Commission, you know, that's something to be very mindful of, you know, as applications and proposals are coming forward, you know, we've heard overwhelmingly what citizens want for mixed use, you know? It's not just, you know, not just retail, not just residential, but they want cohesion and, you know, what, what are the types of developments that people can, can live and work and, you know, create a healthier lifestyle within their own community? So, again, I think, I think we're seeing a higher expectation and we're certainly starting to see more of an emphasis on mixed use as it relates to the city's goals and plans for the future. So, again, from a Planning Commission standpoint, I think it would be very important to be mindful of those standards and, you know, and what the citizens and the city council are expecting when we, when we say mixed use and we approve something that's designated as mixed use. You know, are we meeting those, those goals and those standards? Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen?
I think mixed use development is a good thing. It increases property values. It gives property owners more opportunities with what to do with their property. I think it creates more walkable neighborhoods that encourages a greater sense of community. However, that's my opinion, and my job in the Planning Commission is not to apply my opinion, but to apply the city code. And the city code has the definition of mixed use, and that's the definition that I would apply.
Thank you. Sharon?
Since we're not starting with a blank slate, again, I think we have to consider some areas that are already suburbs, more or less, and try to convince people or hopefully the city's headed in a direction to establish commercial opportunities and employment opportunities nearer to neighborhoods. And like Stephen said, that's my opinion, so I know I have to put that aside when making determinations on the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Are there any questions, are there questions of counselors at this point? Counselor Mankey?
Thank you. Just a quick one, I wanted to make sure we got it in, though. Have you attended a Planning Commission meeting and do you have any insights as to what you thought of it, if you in fact did attend one in regards to their decision-making process and just kind of how the meeting flowed? I don't know who we're starting with.
We will start with Sharon.
Yes, I've attended Planning Commission meetings here, and I was impressed that the commissioners listened. I'm sure they were prepared by going over their staff reports. And they listened to the input of the neighborhood, not only the neighborhood association, but individual members of the neighborhood. And came to a decision that was not easy, but they handled it quite well, and I was impressed.
Stephen?
I have attended a Planning Commission meeting. I wanted to see what I was getting into.
That's a question.
The commission meeting concerned the airport plan, and since I understand that the airport plan is going to be back before the commission, I think it would be out of place for me to comment on whether I agreed or disagreed with the decision because I would want to approach it from a neutral perspective and consider all, all the facts at that time.
Thank you. Sharon?
I have not, because when I became involved with the city, I jumped headfirst into council and was advised that that probably would not be in the best interest. But what I have done is I've read, I have read after each meeting, I've read the minutes and I've read the write-up and how, how, how they voted. I know what has been brought forward, so I am aware of how they, how they vote, what types of things they discuss, so, so, but no. And I wish our city attorney was here to hear me say that I have not attended a...
Thank you very much. All right. Our sixth question, there are many other agencies that operate within the Salem city limits, such as the School District and Transit District, State of Oregon, Marion County. These entities plan for their future growth and operations in Salem. What do you think the city's role should be when planning for its future with these agencies in mind? And I, actually, I'm going to start with Sharon and work the other way.
Thank you. This is another excellent question because I have actually had involvement with, with each of these entities, but it wasn't until I, you know, became a member of council did I really truly understand the interactions and how each of these entities impacts each other. But with regards to the, the city planning for the future and keeping these agencies in mind, I think the role of the city and the Planning Commission is to continue to develop the partnerships that we've already established, to build on those relationships. But I, obviously, you know, the priority of the city is what is best for the city as a whole. But, you know, these are, these are very large organizations, they're very large employers, they have, you know, individual needs. You know, take for example, the state of Oregon, you know? We are, you know, constantly building. Same with, you know, the School District, you know, development of new schools, development of new buildings for, for the state. I think, you know, it's very important for the city to be mindful and to be aware of what each of these agencies is planning for the future. I know from, you know, from some personal experience being involved in some of this that if we don't communicate well, there are challenges. And so, I think what, what is so key in this is keeping communication open with the state agencies, with school districts, with the county, you know, so that we're kind of all on the, on the same page. But, you know, there's a lot of opportunity. Each of these entities is, you know, is, is growing, developing, you know? Marion County, you know, great example with, with regards to Courthouse Square and, you know, all the challenges associated with that. And for the city to be at the table with, for those discussions about, you know, intended development in the future, so, you know, again, I think it comes down to building on the relationships that we have. Thank you.
Stephen?
The services provided by the county, the state, Transit District, the School District, those are all absolutely critical services for the citizens of Salem, and it's important to keep that in mind. to keep that in mind. That being said, however, the interests of, say, Marion County as a whole are not always going to be exactly the same as the interests of the citizens of Salem. I think, for example, of a story that's been in Oregon a lot recently up in Washington County, where they have a composting place called Nature's Needs, and it's causing a lot of problems with, you know, smell complaints from the city that's adjacent to that. And so, while having a composting facility might be in the best interest of the metro area, it's not in the best interest, most likely, of the city of, I think it's North Plains. And so I would always be cognizant of the fact that the Salem Planning Commission is responsible for looking out for the interests of the citizens of Salem. And so, while the other government entities provide essential services and, you know, especially schools, I mean, it's really important that we allow them to provide those services. Ultimately, the responsibility is to the citizens of Salem and what's in the best interest of our city.
And Sharon, last question.
I agree with my fellow applicants. The thing that comes to mind with me most importantly is communication and keeping those lines of communication open. As representatives of the city, we should be looking at the big picture and being informed and informing other agencies of what our plans are. I think that in this particular situation of so many agencies and entities fighting here in Salem, that the city should be more or less central clearinghouse of things that are going on with these agencies. From my history, one of the most impressive things that happened to me was on the commission advising on the placement of a Joshua Tree monument or preserve within the city limits. I was in a position in the private sector to know that the local school district planned to place a school in the middle of the preferred area for the Joshua Preserve. Our botanist had advised that no one should enter the preserve in any large numbers, if indeed we wanted to preserve these things. And no one on that commission knew that the school district was even interested in building a school there. So communication is everything.
Thank you. All right. Are there questions by councillors for any of our applicants? No further questions? I want to be sure. Councillor Dickey, do you have any questions?
No.
I think not. All right.
I was trying to figure out unmuted.
Maybe so. All right. Well, thank you very much to our three applicants. We appreciate your preparation and your appearance this evening and your willingness to serve. Thank you very much. And we'll now adjourn our interview session for the Planning Commission and take a brief break and then begin our city council meeting. Thank you very much.
[inaudible]
Thank you. And I should introduce, Councillor Diana Dickey is at home and she's on the telephone. And we welcome her to the council chambers via the electronic media, so we're glad that you're able to be with us.
Looking good, Diana.
All right. Council comment. Do councillors have comments to share this evening? Councillor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have the opportunity to introduce the city's new lobby team, Jessica Adamson and Ellen Miller. They are with Conkling, Viscom and McCormick. And as Chair of your Legislative Committee, we've had a chance to meet with them, and we are going to be very well represented at the state capitol during this session of the legislature, so...
Thank you. Would I like to stand up? Stand up. All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate the opportunity to contract for your services and to work with you. I was impressed with the way we began our first meeting on our legislative priorities and feel that we're in good hands. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Our next item of business is to take care of the appointments to the Planning Commission. And for those of you who don't know what was going on, maybe as you entered the room this evening, in council chambers, we had interviews of three individuals who had applied for the Planning Commission for the city of Salem. And it is a volunteer position, as all of ours are. And we have two openings. So to councillors, I will direct to you. You have three ballots in front of you, and so we'll take the first ballot. And will you please vote for two? Both of the positions, to my knowledge, begin and end on the same date. And I'm looking around for the staff person that manages that process. Yes, all right. So two openings, and those openings will expire then in December of 2016. So mark your ballots, and then they will be picked up from you. And I believe that Councillor Dickey is emailing her response to the city recorder.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The ballot does say vote for one. Please, why do we...
Oh, it does say vote for one?
It does say vote for one.
I don't understand why. All right. We vote for one, is that?
No.
No, vote for two.
We can vote for two on one ballot.
Because my tally sheet says vote for two.
Okay. All right. Okay.
That was brought to my attention by Councillor Tesla.
Yeah. What can I say?
All right.
I don't want to take credit. I got lots to do today.
Here you are.
Keen eye.
All right. We'll have a silent drum roll while our city attorney tallies those responses. I will take a minute to say to councillors, note that in your binder or on your desk is the calendar for the coming month. That firmly cements your devotion and attention to the city of Salem, day after day and night after night. January, February and March are very busy times for councils. And there is also, for each of you, a copy of the council committee assignment roster. And any of you who would like to volunteer for more duties, see me after the meeting or to discuss the assignments, I think I've had a chance to work with each of you for those.
Okay, the votes have been tallied, and Sharon Blasey has been elected with a total of eight votes. And there is a tie for the second position, so in the next round of balloting, you'll have to vote for Mr. Elzinga and Ms. Guyer.
All right. So we'll vote again. Round two, all right.
Oh, we've counted five or six before.
All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, could you, I didn't hear who the tie was between. Could you repeat that, please?
Oh, all right. Randall?
Mr. Elzinga and Ms. Guyer.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I just had a question. We have nine people here, and we have a tie vote. That means that one person did not vote?
No, not in the first round. On the first round, you had a choice of three people.
Correct.
So the way that, if you tallied up the total number of votes, you'd have 18 votes.
Okay.
I thought it was squared too, but it didn't work that way. Ten and eight is 18.
Are all the ballots in? Have you received Councillor Dickey's ballot?
Mine is 18, what?
And the ballots have been tallied, and Ms. Guyer is the winner.
All right. Well, congratulations, and we do appreciate all three of you for applying and for so carefully applying and answering our questions, and for your presence here this evening. I must say, it was a difficult choice, and you are all three a credit to the community, and we appreciate your applications. And welcome Ms. Guyer and Ms. Blasey to the Planning Commission, and hope to hear again from Stephen very soon.
Maybe it could be other commissions.
Yes, there you go. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. That is concluded, and we now have time for public comment. And we do have a sign-up sheet for public comment, but no one has signed up. Was there anyone in the audience this evening that had intended to sign up? All right. Would you like to come to the podium and introduce yourself and give your name and address? You have three minutes. The first two minutes will be followed by an amber light, and then when the red light comes on, that's the end of the three minutes.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, and I'm Mark Wig. I live at 1950 Saginaw Street South. And thank you all for being here. I appreciate your service. Anyway, I wanted to just ask your help in having the River Crossing website changed. And it's because of the timeline that's given to people right now on that website. I've been working on transportation projects for 20 years. I love seeing projects constructed and built. I've worked on Newburg Dundee bypass, four interchanges, 11 miles of road. They're going to construction. That's very rewarding to see. But I wanted to share with you some of the concerns I have with this project. And this project, the overriding driver for this project is congestion. We do have congestion at the bridgeheads. And, but you have, it seems like the solutions right now, your options are either you can focus on actually solving the congestion problem, or you can continue spending millions of dollars on consultants. They kind of are not the same. You can solve this congestion problem. The timeline right now on the website indicates that by 2014, you're going to start solving this problem. You're going to start going to design and construction. That isn't going to happen. The DEIS indicated that by 2015, you're going to be going to construction. That's not going to happen. As somebody that's dealt with EISs and written EISs, I'll help you along with those timelines. One of the things that has to happen between the draft and final is, to begin with, you get evaluated on whether or not your data is adequate and up to date, and it's not. And so you may have to do a supplemental EIS. The next thing that has to happen is that you have to go through the land use planning permitting, and you have a goal exception that you need and other ones. That's going to take years. The next thing that happens is that you have to finish the FEIS, and then go through appeals processes on that. That could be years. Then you go to a bond. That's not going to happen overnight. That's going to be years, and maybe that's never going to happen, and you don't pass a bond. And then you go into design, and that takes years. But you have to do some design before you do the right-of-way. The right-of-way purchasing takes years. What you're looking at is, if you can get through this process and even select a preferred alternative, you have another 10 years before you're going to get anything done. You're not solving the problem.
Thank you very much. Your time is up. We appreciate you coming down. Thank you. All right. Our next item is to move to the consent calendar. Councillor Bennett, would you like to please present the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move the consent calendar with the following polls. 3.2B by Councillor Benards. 3.3D by the mayor. 3.DF by Councillor Nanki. That's it.
All right. Is there a second? It's been moved by Councillor Bennett and seconded by, was that Councillor Nanki? Thank you. It's Councillor Nanki, to approve the consent calendar with the polls of items 3.2D by Councillor Benars, item 3.3E by myself, and 3.3F by Councillor Nanki. Is there discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Thank you. Motion carries. And for our record, I should have indicated, Councillor Dickey, not feeling well this evening, needed to finish her time on the telephone after the vote for the Planning Commission had been taken. And that's why you heard that tone on the telephone. So we now are consisted of the councillors that you see before you. Okay, so we have the consent calendar with the polls, and we'll now move to public hearing. And we have a public hearing. Will the city recorder please announce, please introduce the hearing?
It was a continued hearing, Mayor, so that we can proceed immediately to staff presentation.
Oh, all right. Fine. All right, and we have a staff presentation. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson and councillors. My name is Glenn Davis, and I'm the Chief Development Engineer in the Public Works Department. We are here to continue a public hearing from January 14th regarding the acquisition of a sanitary sewer easement in the 1900 block of Wallace Road. I would first like to enter the staff report and its addenda and attachments into the On the screen, you can see the proposed location of a new multifamily housing development in Salem along Wallace Road. The property is shown in blue. Note that Orchard Heights is to the south, Riverbin Road is to the north. You can see the portion of the Wallace Marine Park, Ball Field's there on the south side, and Wyman Rivers on the east. Zooming in on the property a little closer here, we see it's located...
It was a continued hearing, Mayor, so that we can proceed immediately to staff presentation.
Oh, all right, fine. All right, and we have a staff presentation. Welcome.
My name is Glenn Davis, and I'm the Chief Development Engineer in the Public Works Department. We are here to continue a public hearing from January fourteenth regarding the acquisition of a sanitary sewer easement in the 1900 block of Wallace Road. I would first like to enter the staff report and its addenda and attachments into the On the screen, you can see the proposed location of a new multifamily housing development in Salem along Wallace Road. The property is shown in blue. Note that Orchard Heights is to the south, Riverbin Road is to the north. You can see the portion of the Wallace Marine Park, Ball Field's there on the south side, and Wyman Rivers on the east. Zooming in on the property a little closer here, we see it's located on Wallace Road, Harret Drive is to the north, the future Marine Drive is just slightly to the east. The abutting properties to the north and east are farm use or vacant, and there are several residential dwellings to the south. So our public hearing tonight refers specifically to an easement needed to provide sewer to the development and their surrounding vicinity, illustrated by the red circle on the screen. For a brief bit of background, this subject appeared before City Council as Resolution 2012-46. That resolution, which Council approved in June of last year, did not include a public hearing, which is required in SRC 66090. So our hearing tonight is reconsidering acquisition of this easement that was considered in that earlier resolution. So my staff presentation will emphasize four basic justifications for the easement acquisition. First, I will address the legal authorization. Second, that the easement has limited impact on the neighboring property. Third, that the gravity sewer is required through the property in question. And lastly, that the sewer construction provides a public benefit to surrounding property So first, how the easement acquisition is authorized. The developer obtained a preliminary declaration for urban growth area development permit 11-1. Sanitary sewer further development is needed through a neighboring property, so the developer attempted to negotiate an easement with the neighbor to no avail. Consistent with the provisions of our code, the developer forwarded the acquisition to the city, and the proposed easement is located outside city limits, but inside the urban growth boundary. To illustrate the need for the sewer, this map shows the sewer infrastructure surrounding the proposed development. Sewer mains here are shown in orange. A forty-two inch main travels north-south along the east end off the property, and then an eight-inch sewer travels east to west, they're traveling just off the north edge of the property there, and the one probably east-west was constructed by the developer for the purposes of serving this development. So now highlighted in blue here is a narrow strip of land that is not owned by the developer, which prevents the developer from access to public sewer. The easement location is circled in red again. So next, the easement has a limited impact on the neighboring property. So I'll return your attention to the screen here, showing the sewer infrastructure, and the parcel being considered for acquisition is in blue. The easement location itself is circled in red, so I'm gonna zoom now into the easement location itself. So this easement is a thirty-foot strip of land that functions as the owner's driveway. The sewer line would cross the driveway in a ten-foot easement, permanent, and it would also include a twenty-foot wide temporary easement during construction. The construction would not disrupt vehicular access to the property, and would return the site to its original conditions with as limited an impact as possible. Third, gravity sewer is required to serve the proposed development, which is available only by constructing a sewer in the neighboring property to the east. So on this screen here, we'll see that these yellow areas on the screen show that the ground generally slopes to the east and to the north. The brown dashed line on the screen shows the general alignment that the sewer main will need to take to flow by gravity. So I'll explain briefly why gravity sewer is the recommended option. So a neighboring property, addressed 1932 Wallace Road, circled in red, has an existing septic system that is located on the developer's property. When the property in blue develops, the septic system must be removed, and the home that needs to be connected to the city sewer system. The connection for that home at 1932 Wallace Road is most appropriately connected to the same sewer system that is being constructed by the developer. The ultimate sewer alignment, once it's complete, is shown here, that will serve the entire development, shown in, the development's in blue, and the home now is shown in yellow, that's gonna be served by this public sewer. The sewer needs to be public for two reasons, primarily. First is that gravity sewer is the basic design criteria for city service, as described both in the wastewater management master plan and in the design standards. And second, the sewer system serving these two properties must be a public system based on our local code, Chapter 70 verse 100, which precludes the option of a privately-owned and maintained sewer pump to serve both properties. And lastly, I want to briefly discuss the public benefit of the sewer to the surrounding So, as you see on the drawing here, the development is shown in blue, the yellow area is also served by this proposed sewer main. In total, the sewer main would serve approximately fifteen acres of property in the area. This configuration is an efficient, low-cost approach to serving sewer for the entire area, which is consistent with our design standards and with our wastewater master Two more things to point out. One is that adjacent property to the north has recently partitioned, and has interest in using this sewer, and has been cooperating with the developer to construct the sewer north of the property being acquired. And lastly, I'll point out that voters approved two properties for annexation in November 2012, shown here in red. The property owners filed for annexation for the purpose of receiving sewer service. So this public sewer, constructed by this tolling project, would provide that sewer service for those properties. So in conclusion, our recommendation is that Council adopt Resolution 2013-6, which declares the city's intent to negotiate, acquire, and condemn if necessary a permanent easement and temporary construction easement for sanitary sewer improvements. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. We will now proceed to testimony by individuals who've signed up for public hearing, and then we will go back at the end for questions of staff. The first person I'll call for public testimony is Wally Lean, and I believe you represent one of the parties.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. And you will have fifteen minutes, fifteen minutes. So apparently, at the end of thirteen minutes, the amber light comes on, is that the way we do it? At the end of fourteen minutes, the amber light comes on, and at the end of fifteen minutes, the red light.
Hopefully, I won't have to deal with the lights, I'm gonna be pretty brief.
Okay, welcome. State your name and address, please.
My name is Wally Lean, I'm land use lawyer, I practice law at 1775 32nd Place Northeast Salem. I am here today representing Dawn and Mary Clark and the Clark family. Could you guys all raise your hands? They're not all gonna testify, but a couple of them will testify. They are the owners of the property that the city is attempting to take. Just as a little bit of a background, at the prior, I guess not public hearing, continued public hearing, two weeks ago, you got this large missile, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to read it yet, but it is a primary basis of our objections that we put out in this case. As you probably are aware, this thing has been going on, we've had two lawsuits, the Clarks won both lawsuits. There is an attorney's fees petition, which the city has conceded. The only issue is how much the city's gonna pay to the Clarks for that failed process the first time. I noticed when staff made its presentation with regard to the authority, on the sheet, it showed the authority was SRC 66090. And at one of the hearings in front of Judge Hill in Polk County Court, your city attorney's office told, conceded, dismissed the condemnation action, and what he told the court was, "We didn't hold a public hearing we were required to, and SRC 66090 doesn't give us the authority to condemn outside our city limits." Okay? Remember, the Clark property is outside the city limits. Okay? The basic flaw in this whole process is that you can't go outside your city limits and condemn. Very, very few times, you can reach outside your corporate limits and take action. 66090 isn't one of those. Your city attorney's office has already told the court that. Okay? Now, today, this morning, I opened up your website to check out the agenda, and I find the supplemental materials. A hundred and fourteen pages that I read this morning. Didn't read them all, but in there is a memorandum from your city attorney that says, "Well, okay, it really isn't SRC 66090 that gives us the power and authority to do this condemnation, we're gonna find it someplace else, because we now recognize that we can't act outside our city limits." You're gonna go condemn somebody's property that's not even in your city limits. And the memo relies on, and this is the only thing I'm gonna touch on, because I think I've bored you enough with all the big paperwork, and I'm giving you another stack today. But, the key issue, regardless of limited benefits, sewer infrastructure, gravity versus pumping, all of that stuff, you simply don't have the power and authority to reach outside your limits and do anything. The city attorney relies on ORS 224020, and says, "Well, we have the power and authority to do this outside of our city limits, because we're constructing a new sewer." Untrue. There's a case, city attorney actually cited it, it's called City of Eugene versus Alvin. It's a 1998 case where the City of Eugene tried to use 224020 to reach outside the corporate limits and condemn property. Sound familiar? What did the court hold in that case? City can't do it. Let me quote you some things from that case. ORS 224020, which the city's now relying on to grab property outside of its city limits, by its terms does not mention compelling extraterritorial connection. That comes as no surprise, given its immediate context, which is authorization to acquire extraterritorial property to facilitate construction of a city sewer system. Not the acquisition of additional sewage to collect in the existing system. Exactly what's going on here? All of these areas are gonna collect their sewer, we're gonna run it outside the city limits. ORS 224020, specifically by court decree, Oregon Court of Appeals, says that's not what that means. Nowhere, I'm going on, nowhere does ORS 224020 speak to the subject of acquiring additional sewage for the existing system to process. Again, that's exactly what you're doing. You're not creating a city sewer system here, you're creating a hookup for some private property to collect additional sewage to put in your system. ORS 224020 doesn't give you the right to do that. Another quote, ordinarily, the jurisdiction of a municipality ceases at its boundaries, and for it to exercise extraterritorial jurisdiction, its powers to do so must be clearly expressed. In other words, although municipal authority generally may derive from express or implied grants from state, the power to act beyond boundaries may not be implied, may not be implied, and instead must be based on expressed, indeed clearly expressed conferral of authority. In this case, the City of Eugene contends that it obtains clearly expressed conferral of extraterritorial authority from the last sentence of 224020. If you read your city attorney's memo, he almost says exactly the same thing, which the court rejected. Lastly, and I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but this is the ultimate finding of the court. None of the statutes, and one of the statutes that was relied on is ORS 224020, on which the city relies for its grant of extraterritorial authority, at the very least, those statutes are reasonably capable of more than one construction, and do not satisfy the clearly expressed grant of extra mural authority that the law requires. So, maybe it doesn't affect anybody, it's still the Clark's property, it's still outside your grasp, the law does not allow you to do it. I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there questions by councilors? All right, thank you very much. Next, we'll call Mark Shipman. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. For the record, Mark Shipman, attorney at 250 Church Street, Southeast, Suite 300, Salem, Oregon. I'm speaking tonight in favor of Resolution 2013-6. This resolution is actually fairly straightforward. It provides for both a temporary construction easement and a permanent sewer easement, ten feet in width across the driveway. The sewer easement, as staff noted, and I appreciate the detail and the presentation that Mr. Davis provided tonight, because I think it really explains what the city is trying to do here. I'm gonna back up a sec. The developer in this case, Mr. Tigerson, went through a urban growth area permit application, and was required by the city to extend this sewer lateral from the forty-two inch main on the east or the right-hand side of the aerial photograph there in yellow. He was obligated to do that per city code. And the City of Salem has an interesting process under Chapter 66, as you may know, which means that it's the developer's obligation to essentially bring facilities to and through properties. And that way, for those of us that are citizens that live in Salem, it's not on our dime, it's on the developer's end to put that in. Mr. Tigerson is obligated to do that by code, he's willing to do that, and he is trying to extend this line both to the west and to the south. And I also appreciate the picture showing that we're talking about, I counted ten properties, I didn't include the Clark's properties as being benefited, but frankly, their property would be benefited by this request and by this resolution. And if you don't have a process in your code, you have, on one hand, in the code, you say, "Hey, the developer shall extend this line, you shall do this," but if the only way that he's able to provide sewer service to this property is via this easement over this private property, that, as Mr. Lean is indicating, that apparently he can't, or you can't take, then it just seems to me that the development community is left with a conundrum. On the one hand, you require us to extend facilities, but yet, on the other hand, you've got folks like the Clarks that stand up and say, "No way, no how, not over our property." That's just wrong. And I think the staff realizes that, and that's why we're back at this for a second round. Mr. Tigerson will speak briefly to the numerous attempts that he has made to try to negotiate in good faith with the Clarks. Frankly, it's been over a period of a couple of years, all right? We're talking about a ten-foot strip, we're talking about a line that's gonna go under the ground, it's not gonna affect them any way whatsoever. The other thing that's important about this is it provides for public sewer. This isn't just for this property, this is for, it actually would benefit, as staff noted, again, I counted ten other properties, there may be more, maybe less, in addition to the developers in this case. As identified, there is that public benefit that also will take care of that private septic system that is lined to the south of the property that's outlined in blue. The septic system actually resides inside on the developer's property, but the house actually resides, lies outside of that property boundary there, and it's gonna take care of that situation as well, in order to put that property, and there may be others in that area that would be able to also connect to the city system, thus taking off septic systems in the city for those newly annexed properties. Finally, I think staff's identified this is the most efficient route of the proposed location for the sewer line, and I concur with staff, and would respectfully urge the council to approve Resolution 2013-6 as presented by staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions? Councilor Bennett?
Thank you. Ms. Shipman, it was a real, I really agree, sort of in theory, with everything you had to say, but it felt like Mr. Lean's questions really didn't focus on the broad public policy, but on an extraterritorial condemnation, and a case that seemed to be pretty clear. Did you have any argument with his legal reasoning in terms of the Court of Appeals and the reading of the statute relative to this kind of condemnation outside the corporate limits?
I've not. I've not, Counselor Bennett. Actually, Mr. Tigerson is represented by separate counsel on this condemnation action, and I think it's the opinion of both the city attorney and the special counsel with respect to the condemnation, that the city has the authority to make, to pass this resolution, and they have the authority. What the resolution does is it enables the city to negotiate and try to work and make an offer with the Clarks to try to formally come up with something, and if not, then to file for the condemnation request. And I believe it's our special counsel, Paul Sundemeyer, who had worked for the Department of Justice for the state of Oregon for quite a long time. He specialized in condemnations. He's kind of the condemnation, I would say, guru in Oregon as it comes to...
Will he testify tonight?
He is not. He's actually not in town. And so he was unable to make it tonight. But it's our opinion that the city has the authority to do that. And so we're not talking about something that's extrajudicial or extraordinary.
Well, I don't know about extrajudicial. I'm just asking if it's outside our boundaries and whether or not the statute allows us to do it. It sounds like, I'm just curious, because it's an interesting, to me, an interesting question. Are we then, in your opinion, I mean, you're really experienced at this, are we resting on the idea that this is a public sewer rather than an extension? Is that kind of how our case is defended? I'm really kind of thrown by it, because it seemed like that may be the nut of our argument is, no, this is a public sewer. It's not an extension. Because it seemed like the case spoke to the question of an extension of a sewer line in the Eugene case.
If I may, if I may, counsel-
Good. Thank you.
Yeah. The case in Eugene had to do with compelling extraterritorial hookups, not with whether the city had the authority to actually build the facility. You know, I'm not a Cub attorney, and I wouldn't read a case that I couldn't rely on for authority.
So you're...
Yes.
Okay.
Are there other questions for Mr. Shipman? Yes, Counselor Clausen.
Thank you, Mr. Shipman. What was the decision that the city made that required the extension of the lateral from east to west that is already built?
It was a urban growth area permit application.
And it was a requirement of the permit application that that be built before it was approved?
That's correct.
Or how did that work?
That it was required as a part of that permit application that they extend that line.
Whether they hooked to it or not?
Well, they're obligated to hook to that line. There's certain properties in that area that would have to hook to that line because of the gravity, because of the city's policy and requirement to be served by a gravity system.
Okay. So it's the city policy that requires the gravity system. So what is all the conversation I've heard about the other option of Linda Lane? Because I keep hearing about that, and I was curious.
I think that I could have our engineer talk about that option.
Do that, or shall we have the staff report handle that? Staff will be answering those questions.
Okay. That's fine. I'll wait for staff.
Okay. Good. Okay. Were there other questions from any of the councilors for Mr. Shipman? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll proceed now. On the list, Don Clark, and of the people who will be speaking in row, Don Clark, John Clark, and then Taylor Clark. So you can just be prepared, one after another, to come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and you each have three minutes. And introduce yourself and give your address, please.
Madam Mayor, city council members, my name is Donald Clark, and I live at 1990 Wallace Road, northwest Salem, Oregon. Thank you for rescheduling this discussion on the easement so that I could be here and have the opportunity to present it. I'm working in Chicago right now in the windy city, cold, too. I would first like to clear up a few comments made by Mr. Tigerson about the negotiations. One of his comments was how I had been ping-ponging over land issues since 1999. Well, he's referring to the problem he and his partner's SunWest Retirement Company had in attempting to purchase our road. Had we sold our road and invested with him as they had encouraged us to do, we would be lost. We would have lost a good portion of our retirement funds, of which our property investments is a large portion of our retirement. I watched Mr. Tigerson and SunWest deal with people, and it has caused me to be very leery and cautious when they make promises and deals. At first, he wanted to go under our road for a few concessions, he told us, that we were already entitled to. I told him it was a family decision and that I would get back with him. I never promised him anything that he said I did. When I told him the answer, that the family had come up, was no. He told me that I'm not going to let you treat me like you did SunWest. If you don't deal with me now, the city will go and condemn your property and give it to me for $200. That's what the man told me. Mary and I are entitled to a better offer than this. Mr. Tigerson railroaded the first portion of this sewer line in already by using our private road. He had no right to use our private road while we were at work and while I was out of town. When I observed his company using our private road to construct his first trunk of the sewer line, which he didn't even have an easement yet to do it, I tried to block him, and he called the police on me to take me off of my private road so that he can continue to use my private road to build his sewer. I just don't know what it's coming to. Two weeks after he had already put the part of that trunk in, the city called me and said, "Well, they'll be down there to put that sewer line in." I said, "It's already in. What are you talking about? He's already put it in." The city didn't even know what's going on. We were never notified that what they were going to do down in the bottom part of our land. And as private property owners, the city has at least the responsibility to let us know what's going on on our property. And Mr. Tigerson had no right at all to do what he did. It was never a negotiation, even from the start. It was just, he harassed us.
Excuse me, Mr. Clark. You are at the end of the three minutes. I'm sorry. I have to be firm, but three minutes is up. Do any councilors have questions? All right. We'll move to the next person on the list. John Clark.
I was just out there for support.
Oh, all right. Tyler Clark?
I was saying...
Mary Clark? And again, state your name and address, please. And you have three minutes. At the end of two is the amber light, and then the red light comes on at the end of three. And you might want to pull that microphone down to your face. There you go.
Is the tip itself?
And it does tip. Yeah, it's flexible on the end there. Yeah.
Madam Mayor and city council members-
Can you speak up, get it more to your face? That's good.
Madam Mayor and city council members, I'm appreciative for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Mary Clark, and I reside at 1990 Wallace Road Northwest, and I've done so proudly for 28 years. I might get a little emotional, because it's my life.
Okay.
Don and I have raised four responsible children on this little farm and property. We both work full-time jobs in addition to running this small farm. We've, I work as a nurse. I've worked 28 years at a small local hospital, and Don is an airplane mechanic. We have provided hundreds of jobs for young people and families at our small berry farm over these 28 years, and we've encouraged good work ethics through having this opportunity for these young people and families. Now, we are being told that the reasonable offer of $200 and then $500 offered by River Ben Heights LLC, to which we refused as an insult, is now grounds for the application of eminent domain to give access to our land to this private developer for his financial gain. The stress of having these people trespass on our property while we were at work or out of town has been taking a toll on Don and I in many ways, physically, financially, and emotionally. We have incurred around $40,000 in attorney fees to protect our interests, and more to come, I'm sure. Without easement, there has been pipeline laid, a new man-held place, and unsavory people telling me that they have the right to use our property and our private road, and that it was a done deal, when this was not true. This has been an unnecessary nightmare for us and our family, and we ask you, our representatives, to consider our property rights and to address our concerns. We are the faces behind the decisions that you make. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming and preparing and testifying. Do any councilors have questions for Mrs. Clark? All right. Thank you very much. Next on the list is Brian Clark.
My parents did it. It's horrible.
All right. Okay. Thank you. And Amy Clark?
About five clocks, so.
All right.
Good for her. Okay. Is this, I'm a little taller, so. Okay. So my name is Amy Clark. I reside at 1990 Wallace Road, and I guess I'm just here to sort of reiterate our basic points. So again, I'd like to thank the city council for the opportunity to address this, to address tonight on this issue. I don't have a whole lot other to say. I guess I had a whole thing here, but I mean, it'd really just be the same sob story. But kind of the points that I would like to reiterate then, because I won't even take the three minutes, is that the parcel of land being considered tonight is not just an investment for us. It has been by our whole family's blood, sweat, and tears that we've been able to maintain our rights to this property through a lot of very difficult times. And this is a very difficult time for us, and we have made ourselves readily available, often missing out on work and classes. I'm a senior at Oregon State University, double majoring in English and Soil Science. I graduate this spring. So we've missed classes and work time to make ourselves available to negotiate on this. So the idea that we have not had a fair negotiation in this is a little, you know, upsetting. But pretty much from the very beginning, we were told exactly the dollar amount that was going to be offered for this, and so that's not a negotiation. That's an intimidation. If somebody says, "You have to accept this low-ball amount," or condemnation is going to happen, that's not a negotiation. I think everybody would agree that that's not a negotiation. Negotiation is back and forth. We are aware that our property is the fastest, easiest, and least destructive way for this development to hook up, but it's not the only way for them to connect. And at no point has there been any sort of runaround or slurry at ping-ponging. This is not a game to us. Our family has spent time politely listening to this sporadic and never agreed upon offers made by this developer, and this ongoing attempt to get something for nothing. And that does not mean that we have ever implied our willingness to barter our property for utility hookup, so we have absolutely no need for. This land is my parents' retirement. It is their nest egg. Most importantly, it is theirs to negotiate a price for. That is the American dream, to work hard, acquire assets, and then when those assets are coveted by other private property owners, to receive a financial benefit for all your years of sacrifice, and not to be told that a low-ball X amount of dollars is all that you and your family and all your hard work has been worth for all those years. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there questions for Amy Clark? Thank you. Appreciate you coming tonight and your testimony. Hans Tigerson is next.
Hello. For the record, my address is 825 Harret Lane, northwest Salem, Oregon, 97302. Just kind of to talk about kind of what's gone on over the years to obtain the easement. And I can't speak on behalf of what happened before I took ownership. I took ownership of this property in 2011. I was not involved in the other party that they mentioned's negotiations. And I would like to thank, I mean, being I've skied with Brian Clark numerous times on the mountain, consider him a friend. He's been, done my landscaping at the property to the north for five years. You know, I've picked berries on the Clark's property, made numerous offers. I have a bunch of copies here of the offers. After about a year and a half of trying to come to offers, and they were always, I thought, on friendly terms, I hired a company to make an offer, and we had appraisal done. This property, there's, going down the driveway, the City of Salem has a access easement down to the city trunk line, and there's also a utility easement for Salem Electric. So the city does have a right to use that driveway. The City of Salem's paved that driveway, and I think a lot of the access questions, you know, City of Salem thought they had a right to use this driveway. As far as access to this property and this trunk line, we've had permission granted from the property to the north, and the contractors were instructed and supposed to access through that property. What I'd like to do, submit for the record, there are six different offers here written that have been permitted, submitted by me. There was 17 offers by the largest easement acquisition company in the nation, Universal Field Services, other Salem offer. There's an offer of $12,500. There's an offer of $23,000. On November 30th, we met with Brian, at Brian Clark's office in Gresham, and we left there, shook hands, said we had an agreement of $25,000. The next day, the terms changed. Mr. Clark brought this handwritten offer to me of $12,500 for the easement plus attorney's fees. That was at noon on, at 12:06. I said, "I will get back to you."
Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Okay. Time?
Your time is up. Counselors, does anyone have questions? Yes, Counselor Nantke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you. Question, there was an issue on persons, construction personnel on a private road, albeit the city may have an easement. I'll ask staff about that. But was a private contractor performing this work, and you said they were instructed to-
Yeah.
...access from the north? Did they in fact access from the south?
They were instructed to, and they should have all accessed, they were supposed to access from the north.
And do you know if that took place?
Under our, they were instructed and told to. We made sure when we were there that they did. So there's, you know, Clark's question that the city, there was also, we were told by the city that we could use that access, and the city's vehicles went down that road. I know Mr. Clark had trouble with, or didn't agree to them going down that, but the city, we were told by the city that that was, they had an easement, and being we had a permit, we were an agent of the city, and we could use that road. So.
Thanks.
Other councilor's question. Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Mr. Tigerson. I was just curious. I'm still trying to figure out, why was the trunk line built ahead of any ability to hook up to the property? Was there, I don't terribly understand that.
The trunk line, the permits were pulled on this, and because the public hearing wasn't held back in June, and so because the process wasn't correctly followed, and that wasn't realized until in December, and so we had permits, and so the process, we got to, you know, we had permits. We built the trunk line because of the weather, and we know we needed to access through the field. All the gravel trucks and all the main trucks came through the field while the ground was hard, and so we didn't realize until after the fact that the hearing hadn't been held.
I see. So it'd be fair to say you proceeded based on the previous decision, and then it was remanded?
No. We were instructed, told by, that there was no issues.
Other questions? Counselor Clem?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Tigerson, you were instructed and told by who to go ahead and build the-
Well, we pulled the permits for that.
But the city told you to go ahead?
Yeah. Just talking with people at the city, there wasn't any- Just talking, talking with people at the city, there wasn't any issues.
Okay.
So, and talking to the people at the legal department, and we didn't, no issues with the condemnation.
Okay.
So, and getting, getting this sewer line, there wasn't any issues that we were going to occur.
I save that question for staff, too.
All right. Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Tigerson? Thank you very much. We now have in our process rebuttal by the affected party, and so I would ask Mr. Lean to return to the microphone.
Questions of staff?
Oh, do questions of staff first, sorry. All right. Questions of staff, and then we'll ask Mr. Lean to return for seven minutes. All right. And I believe there were some questions for staff. Now, who from staff is going to?
Mr. Davis.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry for confusing you. All right. Questions of staff? All right. Counselor Clem, then Counselor Tesler, then Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Glenn, the, I remember council discussing, to some degree, the Linda Lane option, and for whatever reasons, that was not the preferred because the gravity was. Can you speak to the Linda Lane option versus the gravity to the east?
Sure. The Linda Lane option was actually originally proposed by the developer as their connection point. So the application they submitted for the UGA specified Linda Lane as their proposed point of connection. And in our decision, we had given them the additional option and recommendation to go to the east through this, this alignment. So that, that's the history on kind of how it, why it was on the table. What, as you noticed in the presentation, as we learned through the process, the septic system being on the developer's property then added a additional limitation on having two connections, which through the policies and codes requires a public sewer. And a public sewer would not be one of those pumped, but would be one that was gravity. So that's, that's why the Linda Lane option be really, became not, not viable.
And the only other, thank you, Glenn. And the only other question I have maybe is for, for City Attorney. Just clarification on Counselor Bennett's line of questioning about the argument that Mr. Lean brings forward about, does the city have the jurisdiction? Which law is it that allows the city to extend its authority in terms of outside the city limits but inside the UGB? Is it 224?
It's cited in the memo.
So we have the authority?
Yes. You do.
Okay. Are we filing the Kilo statute, as Mr. Lean asserts?
No, because we're not condemning property that will be transferred to a private party.
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
And Counselor Tesler.
Just for my own edification, I understand that if the city has an easement to my private property, that doesn't necessarily mean you can grant that easement to anyone else, right?
I would actually defer to City Attorney on that one.
Your question again?
My question is, if the City of Salem has access to my property to maintain a sewer or just has access or an easement, that doesn't necessarily mean they can grant that access or easement to anyone else. Is that correct?
But, that is correct. But if they're an agent, or they have authorization from the city, if they're an agent, then yes, that person could bootstrap onto the city's authority.
Okay. Next question, please. Was that true? Do these people bootstrap, or were they unauthorizedation of the city at the time they accessed this person's private property?
The, I would like to briefly describe this. There's two different easements that, that we're kind of discussing. There's a, the 42-inch trunk main has an easement around it, and the connection point at that location was part of the city's permit. So the city issued a permit to construct a new 8-inch main that went into that trunk main easement. That wasn't a part of the city's permit. What was not part of the city's permit was accessing the driveway that goes east to west. That is their, that is the driveway we're talking about here. So those are two distinct areas. The permit did authorize the access on the east, but not, like I said, not to the driveway.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Nanki.
Couple on that. Because this, this was up in front of us before, and there was two options. They could go either way, and as it left us, there was nothing that said, "We can't do the Linda Lane," to my recollection. It was like, if they can't figure it out on the backside, they can still go to the front. Is that not the case?
The Linda, like I said, the Linda Lane option had, more or less disappeared, or at least became much more complicated with the, with the septic system, because removing the septic system requires that property to connect to sewer. Two sewers is a different, different scenario, because the application showed one development, one development could have pumped up to Linda Lane by itself. Once you had the second property, that's a public sewer that now has to go by gravity. That's what, that's what changed.
And that was made apparent to council at the time? Because I don't recall that at all.
The, I believe the last time it came to council would have been the urban growth area development permit, when it was called up.
I think so, and there was issues, knowing that there was potentials for, for access, issues regarding easements and what have you, and it was like, well, this would be our preferred, but it can still go the other way if they can't figure it out on the backside.
At the council call, I had done the staff presentation, and the staff recommendation mentioned that the eastern option was the preferred option, the applicant's option was the Linda Lane option. That was how it was presented back then.
And that's how it left us? And then something happened beyond that, that now they can't do it, and the only way we can do that is a public gravity system?
Yes.
But it's still possible to pump?
Not, not when the septic system's removed. When the septic system's removed on the neighboring property, that's where the gravity sewer's necessary.
Could there not be, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Could there not be an agreement between those two property owners to jointly pump into a line?
Our local code does not allow for that.
Now, if I may, Mayor, Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director.
Thank you.
The, if, if, if the home were part of the private development, so it was all part of a private sewer that's pumping to our public sewer, then it is possible. What we will not allow is have, is have essentially Mr. Tigerson's development, development be the sewer provider for the property to the south. That's, the complicator is, when, when you have two different property owners, now, now the pumping system, the pumping system, we will not accept a pumping system. So, because there is a gravity system that, that heads to the east. So if it was just Mr. Tigerson's property, he could pump, he, that property operates the pump, you know, our only interest is, you know, when the sewage is delivered to the main, then it becomes our problem, the pump is his problem. When we have to provide sewage to the private home, then we have to go with a public system, and that is the reason that it has to, that it has to go east.
Can I have one final, then?
All right. And then Counselor.
You spoke to, we had as part of the, the connection where that T comes off of at the back of the property? If I look here, then I'm pointing the same direction. The furthest east, heading towards the river, the multiple dots.
Right.
We had in our easement or construction from way back when, the ability to connect that trunk up, heading back to the west towards Wallace?
Right.
Do the Clarks own the property up above that driveway?
I do not believe that they do. I believe that's in separate ownership.
Do we have the ability to run that branch line all the way to Wallace?
I believe that we, I believe there is a, I believe there is a, an easement that runs all the way to Wallace Road. But I want to confirm that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm, I was going to ask something else, but I got to ask this first.
All right.
Are we obligated to provide septic to the house? Did we do something to cause that situation, that the septic field goes away?
I believe we approved the development. So once the development is approved, the, the, the field is in Mr. Tigerson's property, so he, that property, once that land is developed, will no longer have a drain field, is my understanding.
When, when the septic's removed, the applicant would have two choices. They would have to go to the Marion County Sanitarium and ask for an application to put a new septic in. And it's, well, it's known on this property that there would not be room for it, it's too small. So they'd be denied that, so the home would essentially become abandoned. So that, our, our local codes then would, they've annexed, they've come to the city asking for sewer service, and then this is the way they provide them with the service. So if, I guess the option would be not to develop, and that, the development permit is what given, has given the authority to, to move forward.
Okay. I'm just bothered by this whole thing with the Linda Lane option going away, kind of behind our backs to some extent, I feel like. I mean, it feels weird to me for some reason. The other question, the main question I had, or one real fast one, is, is the gravity sewer required or recommended? During the presentation, both words were used. Or was it recommended at the time, and now it's been determined that it's required?
That's not a, two connections to the city's system requires a public sewer, so I'd say it's required.
It's required if both connections are made?
Yes.
Sorry, I just need to think about that a second.
Okay. We can always come back to you again. Counselor Bennett?
I want to just follow up on Counselor Nanki and join Clausen, and this happened out of sight. Do I understand that? In terms of losing the Linda Lane option, because I remember this, and the developer wanted to go to Linda Lane, you know, an alternative, if he could negotiate, it would be to go gravity down to this other line. And that's where we left this story. Or did the story also, at some point, was there like another chapter around this annexation where we were told, in the process of agreeing to this, to putting this annexation on the ballot, this issue of, of sewer service foreclosed Linda Lane? Did, were we ever told any of this? In, in terms of foreclosing Linda Lane, setting ourselves up for a condemnation in this, what was a pretty hot case anyway? I, I just don't remember this happening, and I just wonder if it happened in front of us, or if it's administrative, and now it's coming to us to sort it out.
If I can explain briefly, that the annexation does not require the sewer connection. Annexation just is annexing. It does give them legal authority to connect. What happens is, when the developer removes the septic system, that now requires this public sewer. So one, if, if they're not able to get this connection for public sewer, then the Linda Lane option becomes the only option authorized by the urban growth area development permit. But they can't do their full development because of the septic system. So we're in effect, would have to come back to do an amended UGA decision to come up with another sewer solution, because the two solutions that are authorized in the urban growth area development would both become impractical. One being Linda Lane, which is not authorized because of the septic, one being this condemnation. That's, that's kind of the sequence of events that has happened.
All right.
We're, Counselor Bennett?
You have lost, I, I'll just tell you in all honesty, I am absolutely lost as to how this has happened, that it's coming to us to resolve what sounds like still a negotiable issue. It's just that somebody in all this process, I, I'm just having a hard time understanding why this can't be negotiated except over price. I mean, the only thing missing, missing here is, is agreement on price, why we're getting a, we're already in for attorney's fees, or, I, I'm just having trouble as to how we got into it, and then I'm still, and, and I agree with the city attorney, you know, I'm sure we're on good, solid legal ground, but there's still just this sort of sense of inequity going on here. I, I don't feel like this, this just doesn't feel right. You know what I mean? I can hear the policy, but it doesn't feel, usually this stuff feels fine, but this one doesn't feel right.
Well, if, if the counsel-
Can you fix my feelings?
Well, if, if the council, if the council chooses not to, not to adopt the resolution, the applicant would have really two choices. One would be to continue to negotiate with the Clarks to try to reach an agreement and do the gravity option, which gives them their full development. The second option would be to not remove the septic and to move forward on the Linda Lane option. Okay? Or third would be to, to come up with some other option and amend the original urban growth area development with a third sewer option, which would come back before, would, on council call, come back to here. So there, that's the, that's the ramifications of, of not moving forward on the, on this acquisition.
Who then is up the creek with, on the, on the annexation and septic system? Who, who's, who's not got a paddle in this? Who, who owns that piece of property? Who's that?
I don't know. It's not, it's not the developer. I don't, I don't know.
Why, is he here? Because he sounds like he's in jeopardy, doesn't he?
Well, I, I believe the city would not be issuing permits to remove that septic system unless this, unless this is-
Does he know he's in jeopardy? She, he or she know they're in jeopardy to not be able to connect to a sewer system? Do they know that?
I don't know that answer.
Okay.
Okay. Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm trying to get this house through my head. I'm not understanding how the house has anything to do with this situation. It sounds to me, and if my memory serves me right, like the house sold their rights to the sewer field, the septic field, drain field, to the developer. That has nothing to do with us. That's their decision. And I, at the risk of sounding heartless, I just need to understand what's going on here legally. Help me understand, did they sell that to the developer? Did they sell their easement? I assume it was an easement, or maybe they owned a square of land to the north? I don't know. Did they sell an easement to the developer? And if so, how does that obligate us to provide a septic or a sewer hookup for the home? And I'm not saying I don't want to provide it, I'm just saying, I just need to understand what's going on here. I don't understand how they're mutually exclusive, that we either have to this or we have to that. I don't understand how the septic field ties into our decision at all.
I can-
Well, the, it, it doesn't tie into your decision. I mean, your decision is very simply, you know, do you want to proceed with the condemnation of that easement?
Right.
It really has nothing to do with the house. The house is, the, the only issue related to the house is in response to the question as to why the pumping option does not work. Okay? And the pumping option doesn't work is because they're in two separate ownerships. I don't know the answer to-
No, but-
How was their drain field on Mr. Tigerson's property, and whether that was a, you know, a negotiation or not negotiation. What I can tell you, the city's interest is that we cannot have a separate ownership, you know, having their sewer through a private property and a private pump.
Understood. So here's the crux of the question. Did we require that as part of this URA, this new development provide a new sanitary hookup for this house? And if-
They would, they would, with the removal of the drain field, they would have to provide-
They have to, or the house has to, because that's their responsibility?
Well, it has, it has to have access to public sewer.
It has to?
Yes, because they would no longer have a septic system. So they would have to have access to public sewer.
No, I understand. But that was their decision they made to get rid of the drain field. Do, do you see what I'm saying? Because they got rid of their drain field or the rights to their drain field, why does that obligate the city to pay money to hook them up?
Well, the city isn't paying money. We're not, we're not into it for any money.
Exactly. So in my, in my, what I'm trying to understand here is, why is that even in part of the equation that they're going to hook up through the new development property? Wouldn't we just be moving forward with the assumption that they're going to pump their own sewer, and then the house is going to figure out where their sewer goes? Because they sold their rights to their drain field.
If council chooses to not proceed with this condemnation, and Mr. Tigerson cannot come to terms with the Clark family, then that is in effect what will happen. Mr. Tigerson can pump in the first phase of his development, and when he comes to do the second phase of his development, which would eliminate the drain field, then, then a solution would have to be found before we allowed that to happen.
So the Linda Lane is not precluded right now?
The Linda Lane, the Linda Lane in and of itself is not precluded, but there's certainly a phase of that development that, that would be precluded. a phase of that development that would be precluded. The Lynda Lane will not service the second phase of that development.
Why would that be?
Because it eliminates the-
I don't, I still am not following why that's mutually exclusive.
Because once the house does not have a drain field, they need to be, they need to have access to the public sewer.
Mr. Bennett, if you could, if you could clarify the Phase 1 and Phase 2 issues-
Certainly.
And maybe if you could use the cursor, so that people can see it on the screen, instead of pointing-
Mr. Davis can show them, what the first phase is.
Well, I remember Phase 1 and Phase 2. I'm just not understanding why the city is compelled to provide access to sewer to somebody who has released their rights to their drain field.
Well, because that, because that's what we do. I, we, we provide, you know, access to, you know, that is the only, they can't, that house cannot be served with a lateral to the west.
But they could pump, they could figure out a way to buy their properties-
They would have to figure out a way to pump, and have an easement for their lateral out to, to Wallace Road. So, but, if Mr. Tigerson was providing the public sewer that you see there-
That's an if. I don't understand why that house, and that sewer being gone, would preclude Mr. Tigerson from being able to move forward if he has purchased that property.
Because we would have to figure out a way, we cannot have-
According to what? That's what I don't understand.
Well, we could not have a, we could not have a private property owner dumping their sewer into another property.
Well, in other, in essence, it would make the house uninhabitable.
It would either make it uninhabitable, or Mr. Tigerson would have to buy it and make it part of his development, so that it would be under one ownership.
So, but why, I'm still, why do we need to cover for somebody's decision to get rid of a portion of their house that makes it habitable? And why would Mr. Tigerson need to be responsible for that? I'm not, I'm trying to sound heartless here, but I'm trying to figure out, down to the crux of, is that actually something that should be taken into account in this decision? I'm not seeing how it is.
Well, well, Counselor, I guess I would, my argument would be, is that that is, this is, this is good planning. So we're planning for those homes that do not have access to sewer, you know, through, like we do throughout the community, this, we are planning for the sewerage. That's why, that's why the developer is our agent, that's what Chapter 66 in our code is all about. It's about planning for infrastructure, and making sure that not just each development has infrastructure, but that infrastructure is provided in an orderly fashion for other, for other sites. So what that red dash lined is about, is about not just providing sewer for Mr. Tigerson's property, but for providing sewer for the homes south of Mr. Tigerson's property, and for providing sewer for the properties north of Mr. Tigerson's property in the yellow. And that's, that's why they have a permit from us, that's why they were able to build the first line east-west, and that's why we, Mr. Tigerson doesn't want to provide sewer to that home, but because that is removed, you know, we require that as part of our growth management laws. That's what, that's what it's, that's, that's the whole crux of our, of our growth management laws.
The word "required" just came back. Did we require it, or did we recommend it?
Well, again, we're kind of in the catch-22. If, if he removes the drain field from the, for, to develop Phase 2, the second phase of his development, then we have to have public sewer for that home to connect to. If he does not develop Phase 2, then he can build the Lynda Lane.
I'm just not following where the "we have to provide sewer" comes from again. I mean, I don't know. I, I'm missing something.
Okay, I, I know that Counselor Nanki had his hand up to speak after Counselor Clausen, but I am also cognizant that Counselor Clem is waving his hand, and I'm wondering if, Counselor Nanki, do you want to go ahead and ask your question?
Yeah, it was a similar piece here, I think.
Okay, let's do that, and then we'll get to Counselor Clem, okay? Yeah.
As a hypothetical, say the same property is there, and they're using the road just to the north of the house that has the septic. And as part of a development, we approve, that road goes away. We're required to make sure that property has access to roadways, correct?
That is correct.
But say the subject property is a PUD and has private streets, we still require them to make connection to that property?
They would have to have a reciprocal easement that would have to be recorded, that we would see and-
So it's the developer's responsibility to provide that service to that property?
Right.
So, if we're talking about sewer now, pumped to Lynda Lane, both phases, and pumped from that one house to Lynda Lane in the same trench. Is that possible or not? Two separate lines?
It is not the same thing, because in this case, the, if the pump fails, then he, that, that property is not part of Mr. Tigerson's development.
No, it's an easement for that, whatever goes up to the street, right?
So how do we, how do we enforce, if, if Mr. Tigerson abandons the apartment building-
Because that house is provided with its own pump system all the way to Lynda Lane.
That, 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 well, I-
That could happen, correct?
I, I guess it could. I guess it could.
You just run two lines down, one from one property, one from the other.
I guess they could do that.
Okay.
I guess they could do, yes.
Just wanted to make sure that was an option as well.
Yes, that is, that is not precluded from, that is not a solution that is precluded. It is a very inelegant solution, but it is, but, 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 but the law does not preclude that.
Okay. Counselor Clem?
Yes, Madam Mayor, as this is in my ward, I would move continuation of this public hearing to the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
February 11th?
February 11th. Yeah, I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved by Counselor Clem, and seconded by Counselor, was it Bennett?
Yeah.
Yes, to continue this hearing to the next council meeting, which is on February 11th. Is there discussion?
I will not be at the February 11th meeting, I prefer to-
Actually, there will be three of us absent. Oh, no.
That's the March-
I'm sorry, that's in March. Okay, forget that.
But I will also be absent on February 11th.
On February 11th.
And the next council meeting would be February 25th.
Oh, oh, after that, okay.
And that would be my-
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to February 25th council meeting.
February 25th?
Assuming parties will all be available.
Okay. Any further discussion about that motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to take a brief recess, let everyone get a chance to stretch their legs, et cetera, and move around the council chambers a little bit. Thank you.
That's my idea.
We all get our-
We're going to resume our council meeting this evening. For Monday, January 28th. Can't believe the month is just about over. We are picking back up where we left off. We go to Item 5, Special Orders of Business, and the first thing will be the items from the consent calendar that were pulled, and those items The first one is 3.2D, pulled by Counselor Benars. Would you like to introduce that, make a motion, Counselor?
Oh, timely, thank you.
Yes, sorry.
Since I'm the new man on the block, I'm still learning a few things about this, but I would like to make a motion to adopt the staff recommendation, except that the library parking fee for one hour be raised to $1.
Second for discussion.
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Benars, and seconded by Counselor Nanki. And discussion?
If I may speak to the motion?
Yes.
Looking through staff report, I see that most of the, the parking rates are about $1 per hour, Corvallis, Eugene, Portland, or the Lloyd Center area of Portland. And when I was looking through that, I know that we're increasing through the same item, they'll be increasing the rate to $1.60 on those areas that are metered within the city of Salem. Downtown Portland, I think, is at $1.50. But it came to my mind that, when I looked at the price for the city, for the, for the city library, is 50 cents per hour. And then secondly, it came to my mind that the fees or the money that comes from those meters go to the library.
The, for the-
From the parking meters-
The library parking lot.
From the library parking lot area goes to the library, and knowing that it's a user fee, and there's certainly a lack of funds in, in, in the account, and we have maintenance issues that we have to deal with, I think it's only fair that the rate is increased to reflect what is actually happening within the market.
And would you please repeat your motion for me?
Motion to adopt staff recommendation, except that the library parking fee for one hour be raised to $1.
All right, and that was seconded by Counselor Nanki. Is there further discussion? Counselor Clem?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not sure what the process has been, but, boy, I'd sure like to fund the library, but I'd kind of like the library advisory board to weigh in on this one. So to the maker of the motion, any members of council, anybody, or staff, the library advisory boardman brought into this mindset at all, or?
Thank you, Counselor Clem. They have not been. And I know there's been some concern among the board members and the staff at the library, that that price isn't very elastic. There, there's some concern that people already have about their even 50 cents charge for the library.
And to that end, I'd like to make an amended motion, that Counselor Benars's motion, but that it would state that the meter rates at the library remain at 50 cents an hour to accommodate library patrons, and that the library advisory board be asked about use of parking fees at that structure to help pay for the library.
I'll second that.
Do you want to make that as a substitute motion?
Substitute. Friendly amendment, friendly substitute.
All right, and second.
Loving, loving, embracing.
And here's a, here's a friendly second for you.
Thank you.
All right.
Loving and embracing.
All right, so we now have a motion on the floor. Is there further discussion about the amended motion? Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not familiar with parking, to be completely honest. These were both very informative to me, this one and the other one that's talking later on. I didn't know parking meter fee proceeds go to the library. Is that normal? Have they always done that?
I, for years.
I figured they went back to the same fund as the rest of parking meters.
Since I've been at the city, I've been here eight years, and they have been during that time. Yeah.
They don't go back in the fund of all the other mark, parking meters, huh?
No.
No.
Didn't?
No, they did not.
All right, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to give clarification on what the substitute was. It was essentially all of staff's recommendation, including the additions, deletions, and that it go to the library advisory board.
Yes.
Yes, for the library meter fee.
Ask, ask their advice on changing, altering, or leaving alone the library meter fee for purposes of funding the library.
Okay, just for clarification, that it would be the intent of this report to not change library until we have library input.
Right.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, Counselor Benars?
My intent isn't to hold up the, the increased rates, certainly, we need those rates, especially with the legislature coming to town. My intent was to say that, I think 50 cents is hard on a lot of people, but it still doesn't pay all the bills, and so I just, I want to make sure this is looked at.
Okay.
If the recommendation is, it remains at 50 cents, then it does, by the, by the library, by the library committee.
Yes, I understood that was your intent.
Okay.
All right.
And if I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that it would come back to us, because the way the motion sounded, it's like, do everything we said in the staff report, ask them what they want. But if they said, no, yes, let it come back, so that we understand what their position actually is on.
Well, if they made a recommendation back to us, it would come back.
Yeah, I would, I would prefer a recommendation.
I can, I'll just watch for a nod from the library manager there, and they're nodding. That we can, you may want to see what I'm going to ask first, that we could bring this back to council by February 28th. Does that give you enough time to go to the board? All right, so we'll bring it back on that day.
All right, all right. And, and-
If I-
Yes, Counselor Clem?
Yeah, and I made the motion simply because I like the idea that, I think it's good education that we all know that the library has been very aggressive in helping to, particularly the foundation, Friends of the Library and the foundation, for, gosh, paying for just about everything that's gone into the library for the last five years. And so, you know, their opinion is kind of the first place I'd look to see if we can raise more money for the library, because we haven't started budget yet.
Right.
And so I think it's a great point that Counselor Benars brings up, but, boy, I first want to check with the folks who, who've exhibited as much or more passion for our own library than we have, and that's the advisory board, so.
All right, Counselor Net, Counselor Bennett?
Yeah, I, I joined Counselor Clem. I appreciate Counselor Bernard's motion. I think it gives the library a chance to take a look at this part of their revenue stream. And I know Counselor Clem and I both look at the one day a week in West Salem, and think that there are certainly needs out there beyond even the central library, so we're real interested in this one.
Fine, thank you. All right, now, to recap, the substitute motion is to move for the staff recommendation with the addition of taking a request to the library advisory board to come back with an advice about parking meter fees in the city's parking structure at the library.
My understanding was not to increase the fees at the parking, for the library, until we come back with a recommendation.
Right, because that wasn't part of this anyway.
Right.
Right, okay. Counselor Tesler?
Just as a small suggestion, and I'll, of course, let the advisory board come back to us with their pearls of wisdom, but if you look at the parking service fees at the library themselves, I'm sure that, you know, if you, times 50 cents, times eight, you get $4, and currently it's $3.50 to park there all day, so you could possibly add the 50 cents to the daily, or you could up the border cycle, or you could kind of go at it through the, maybe the monthly rates, I think would be better, because I guess people who go there and use the library for an hour kind of feel like, you know, there's, it doesn't seem fair to make them carry the burden, because they're the real patrons of the library, I guess. And plus, I don't want to pay a dollar, so I guess there is some self-interest there. But, you know, I would just suggest looking at these parking rates at the library, and maybe seeing if they could be adjusted, you know?
Yeah, and then park on the public street.
As you can.
All right, I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of the substitute motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on the poll agenda is 3.3E, as in everybody, and I'm the one that indicated-
D.
D.
Oh, did I get that mixed up?
Yeah, it's-
B?
D, I probably mispronounced it, D. It's your poll.
D is a-
Yeah, I think I was looking at that old agenda when I wrote that down.
I'll bet.
E.
D.
D. D isn't down on your-
You know?
Do it again.
This really isn't as easy as I make it look.
It's a lot harder.
Yes, I did ask for an opportunity, and what I'd like to do is to move the staff recommendation of that item, and further ask that we move for a compensation analysis for benchmark positions in our groups of non-represented employees, including, that include our department heads and managers.
Second.
All right, thank you very much. It's been moved by myself as mayor, and seconded by Counselor Bennett, to move staff recommendation with the addition of the request for compensation analysis, and come back, actually, to come back to us with a recommendation based on a survey analysis for those positions. All right, Counselor Nanki, and then Counselor Tesler, and then Counselor Clem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the comprehensive analysis would also be for the two positions that were included in the staff report, or not?
No, no, it's to move for the staff report to be approved, and then in addition, to further come back to us with a recommendation based on- further come back to us with a recommendation based on a survey analysis of other positions.
And that was kind of where my concerns were inside of the staff report in and of itself. It's, a compensation study was done, not necessarily comprehensive. We have a couple of cities, but we don't know what other cities are and whether or not these push it up. I'm just concerned about inflating the entirety of wages inside of the city, and I think we need to see potentially more jurisdictions to get a broader view of what the true average might be and then what Salem's position is. I know we've had trouble in the past getting positions, and we've, I hate to say, based on the position and how important it is to the operation, because all of our operations are important.
Sure.
To elements of our community, a little more in some cases than others, but I'd at least like to understand this one more and maybe a little have a bigger discussion on a couple of these based with the information that comes back as well. So I'd almost move to include these in a more comprehensive as well.
So are you saying that you would like to amend the motion?
If, it would actually, that would be messy. Substitute motion would be to comprehensive of the personnel that you inquired in regards to, as well as these two positions.
And before we do that, maybe I'd like to turn to our city manager and ask her to speak for a moment about this particular item.
The reason we've moved, well, I didn't know the mayor was gonna make that motion when we started this process, but our budget officer, I knew today, yes. So our budget officer, why we came with these two originally, our budget officer position has been open since last July, and we've gone out twice in pretty extensive recruitments and have not been able to find candidates who had the level of experience that we're looking for, the background that we're looking for. And our court administrative position, which is a really critical position in our organization, is now vacant. She went to another similar position in Eugene. We need to start recruiting for that right away, so that's why I brought these two forward, is doing a larger salary survey may take another two or three months to do that analysis and come back to council. I would hate to wait that long to fill these two positions.
If I may, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And I can understand that. My concern is, and we may be seeing it across the board with department directors and everything else, is the baby boomers start dropping out of the market, that we will not be able to find many people with the level of experience it require. So, as well as other jurisdictions, are we gonna get into this price escalation across the board to try to get in decent people, or how will we handle that, down the line?
Well, we have, once in a while, we've had that position, but we have not had, we haven't had that situation for every position that we go out for. But I'll tell you, next to the budget, that's my second worry, is that we will have a hard time recruiting. We know that other public sector and private sector organizations are having the same difficulty getting experienced people. But we do, Director Manell talked about the fact that we haven't had an outside firm go out and do a comprehensive salary study for a long time. But we do, every, you know, two or three years, keep a check on where we are with the positions. We have brought positions to you before, such as Mark Bechtel's position a couple of years ago. When we see one that we think is just too far out of line, we have brought those forward. So I don't think we'll find that we're tremendously out of market, but in the last three years, when we have not given the same kind of market adjustments to nonrepresented, and as you recall, department had zero percent raise last year, they're starting, I think, to lag behind the market, and we're gonna end up in a position where we may have a big increase. So it would be nice to do the study, just to make sure we get up to market level if we're not already, and how we implement that, or over what period of time we implemented that, if there are adjustments, is something we'd need to talk about.
I'm just concerned in general with how wages are functioning now in Oregon as well, since we have constant pressure now from the bottom end.
Right, right.
Tied with cost of living. It'd be nice to relook at that as a state sometime soon as well.
Thank you. I would like to note for people who don't have the benefit of the binder or haven't seen this online as an attachment, but there is a staff report, and it does give information about salary ranges for certain positions in several other cities, Beaverton, Eugene, Gresham, Hillsborough, Tigert, Springfield, Medford, Marion County, and I just wanted to point that out for anybody who's watching, who doesn't have a benefit of this. And it is in the council packet on the website.
That's right.
Yeah, but, so we don't do this without advice and without some research. So back to my motion and then to Counselor Nanki. Do I understand that you're making a substitute motion?
Well, I said if I --
No, you're not, okay.
-- that's what it would be, but if the motion was not formalized nor seconded.
Okay, all right. And was there another hand on this issue?
No.
Counselor Clem and then Counselor Thomas.
I just joined Counselor Nanki. I would rather make this decision seeing, because they're, these two positions may get upped and then we'll find, do we know empirically that we don't have other people who aren't deserving of salary adjustments one way or the other, or?
No, I think there will be some positions that are below market, but based on the market analysis we just did for these two positions, I feel very comfortable with where we're going to move these two.
So upping the --
The court administrator might need to even go, or, excuse me, the budget officer, one position higher, but I didn't want to do that until we have a more comprehensive look.
Okay, so raising the minimum salary, $600 a month, will help us hire some, attract candidates that we're not attracting now?
Yeah.
Is that the assumption?
I'm hoping so. Yeah, well, at least we know we'll be within market for these two positions as we go out again.
Okay.
And we know we're not now.
Counselor Thomas?
Thank you. My question is, what are your recruitment strategies, and were there any minority groups included in those recruitment strategies?
Connie, yeah. Yeah, Connie Manell, our human resources director. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last question.
The recruitment strategies, were there any minority groups targeted for these?
Yes, we always target our minority groupments, our minority groups, as well as special publications, too. We do mostly Western United States. In the budget and in this particular position with the court supervisor, it's gonna require a little bit more extensive recruiting, because we know we're competing against finance directors, and in the court administration case, there's a lot of larger courts in Oregon here, so we are looking to bring people in, and they're not what I consider local jobs, which we will be doing extensive recruiting, and we do recruit with the minority agencies as well.
So which, which groups? Just curious.
I would have to ask our HR analyst, who does the direct recruiting, to come down here, give you a rundown in terms of the groups. This is Franklin Filizardo, and he's our analyst assigned to do the recruitment.
Mayor, council.
Welcome.
Thank you. We have a mailing list that we send all our recruitments to electronically and in a mailing format, and they are various groups in the state. And they are, you know, for example, we have, there's a local group in Portland that we send to, and we have just started to use the email list, and so they'll go out to either the business schools, or the cultural clubs, or just other agencies, nonprofits, that service ethnic groups or special interest groups. And so we do that, we all have, like, they send to us and we send to them as well.
So it's just in Oregon or outside of Oregon as well?
It's, I'm sorry, it's both. It's on the west coast. I apologize.
Okay.
Counselor, if you'd like to have a copy of our mailing list, we can certainly provide that to you.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Counselor Benars?
I see that our budget officer resigned right after the last budget cycle, so we haven't had anybody in that position since July of 2012.
Right.
Facing the fact that we're entering into the new budget cycle, are we gonna be able to function if we don't fill that position?
Absolutely, and Kelly Jacobs, who is just here, is coordinating that for us this year. She was previously in the budget office. So Kelly Jacobs, another former budget office member who's now in Public Works, Alicia Lealock is helping, and then we have our two budget staff members who are working on it. So I feel confident. It's, again, another additional workload to more people, which we're doing all over the organization, but the wonderful thing about this organization is we have people who step up when we have a need, and they've done that here.
So following up, then, I mean, the caveat to that is, if the position or those job duties can be fulfilled, is the position needed? We have great staff, but --
Well, they also have other jobs, other full-time jobs that they're doing. So some of that work is being moved to other people or not being done while they're stepping up to help with this, and it's, the budget's being put together in a more, I don't want to say fragmented, but every, every person who's working on it has taken responsibilities for different aspects of the budget. And so Casey Duncan and I will be spending more time with the coordination of it than we normally do, and Deborah Bond, our administrative services director. This is not how I would want to put a budget together every year.
Seems like they'll be joining the gang late in the cycle, I guess.
Pardon me?
Well, they'll be joining, they'll be coming on board late in the cycle, after they won't have the, if they're gonna come to Salem and learn this, or learn our system.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have the position filled. I would like to have it filled in about April, and so they'll be through the budget committee process, hopefully if we can get some good candidates and select someone by then, and so that'll be a good opportunity to begin to understand our process here.
Everybody can ask them why. Why did you do this?
No, please don't.
Were there other counselors with questions? All right, then the motion, as you had heard, is the recommended staff recommendation with the addition of asking staff to complete a compensation analysis for benchmark positions and then come back to us with recommendations based on those salary analysis. All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, with one nay, the ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, and Counselor Clem voting no. All right, and our next poll.
3.3F, Madam Mayor.
3.3F by Counselor Nanki.
Yes.
Counselor Nanki, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd move staff recommendation.
Second.
And with that, I have some questions.
It's been moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Tesler. Discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may speak to my motion, the way the staff report read was confusing to me, and I spoke with John Wales prior to the meeting, and I think I have a better understanding. Previously, I was gonna recommend referring this back to staff to come back with more information. I still probably like some information, but it looked like next steps that would take, once we moved it out of here, would all take place without us. Essentially, we're gonna hire a parking consultant, they're gonna go out and do it, they're gonna look at technology, and they're gonna start billing people based on the technology and put the technology in.
Oh, no.
And I'm concerned, depending on how much some of that front-end stuff costs as well, how much does a consultant cost, what's a general idea of some of the new technology and what are its financial endpoints, just an estimate, this is kind of what people have been paying, because we just raised the parking rates, and now, well, let's change everything and double that price, because we have to, to pay for the new infrastructure that we're putting in place, and that is my concern. And if council doesn't like what the number kind of is, why would we want to go out and do a parking study to find a number that we know we don't already like?
Maybe I can, I do, maybe I can take that in pieces. The consultants, we know when we've done these kind of studies before for downtown, to see how much it costs and what, or to see what the usage is, and we would intend to do that during the legislative session. That's about $10,000 when we do that each time. So I'd want to do it during the legislative session when it's busiest, and then we're thinking, again, in September, when we, when it's not very busy, so that we have a better idea when, of what the revenue will be generated from a new system, because we would want to have that revenue, potentially, maybe a revenue bond to buy the cap, to handle the capital cost of the new equipment. So it would need to be adequate to meet our other parking fund needs, as well as to pay the debt service for the equipment. Certainly, we would bring that back. We can bring back to you, if you wanted, what the consultant would be doing and what that cost is. We would certainly bring the analysis back to you, probably more than once, before we would go forward with a new equipment purchase and how we would fund that and what we anticipate the revenue to be.
If I may, one follow-up, because with all the wonderful new technology that's out there, and it's like, no, you know, human, walk over there and grab something and bring it back and put it in your window. I would hope that sometime, technology will actually cost less for people. That would be my hope, that because we don't have to maintain all these little things, we have one thing, that we can actually reduce our prices on people rather than raise them.
We hope so.
Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, you're exactly right, Counselor Nanki. We had a chance to do, on the parking task force that you all set up, we had a chance to look at the variety of technology that's available, but not an exhaustive look. We really weren't constituted to make this decision, but what we found, just generally, number one, you can enormously improve convenience for our customers at parking pay stations, so that they don't, I get emails, and maybe it's because I know people who are stuck doing this down by the Capitol, who complain about, you'll recognize, because I'm the guy with the big sack of quarters running around down there. Yes, that kind of, you get sort of the gist of the complaint, but that we can go very quickly, we will have to, to electronic technology. The current technology is way outmoded. These are 20-year-old systems. They are, they are rapidly becoming increasingly difficult to maintain, and that the revenue generated by this kind of change in technology, depending what you decide to do, can result in substantial increase in your revenue as a result of changing the kind of technology you use, which can result in lower fees. It really is quite interesting. We heard just enough to know this is the road to go down. We also heard just enough to know that we need to have somebody who specializes in this area, help guide the council toward the decision that best meets our goals, which is lower cost, better service for our customers, et cetera.
All right, other questions? Counselor Claussen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was personally happy to see this. I'll tell you what, when I go eat lunch at the Sassy Onion or Adam's Ribs, I just am confounded, and I never have cash or change. I mean, just permanently, they are not a part of me, so it just makes a whole lot of sense where we should be providing our customers with, if we're gonna make them pay for something, let's make them pay in a way, or allow them to pay in a way that people pay today. That, and then also, you know, in my head, I kind of linked this one and the one with establishing higher fees, but I guess they're really not linked, so.
No, they're not.
I kind of was thinking this money was going in a pot for this technology upgrade, but I don't think that is the case. So I definitely want to take a good, close look at this and see if we can fund this, partially out of what we did, what we raised, the fee, or whatever it takes, because this makes a lot of sense to me, to service our customers in the capital area.
Counselor Claussen and then Counselor Benars. Oh, excuse me, Counselor Clem and Counselor Benars.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The assumption here is in the staff report that staff will provide counsel with an update on the project in FY 1314. My assumption is, is that they'll engage with the affected residential or business communities proximate to where those changes would occur, so is that, is that a fair assumption?
Yes.
Manager Norris?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure we don't leave the businesses and the citizens out of this det, this -- process chart, so, okay.
Counselor Benars?
Do we have a slight idea of how much this equipment's going to cost, just a ballpark?
How much the what?
The equipment's going to cost.
Oh, Mr. Wells, do you know that? I don't think we just have.
It's going to depend on what kind of system we purchase. And I don't know, Sharie, if we've developed any cost range yet. It's, it's, two things are going to have to happen. One is, we've got to, first, if the council adopts this motion tonight, we'll go and start evaluating what the revenues are going to come out of, what we anticipate. And we're also going to be talking with IT and with finance to see what's the best system out there that will integrate with what we already have. And I'm envisioning that we'll have several work sessions on this to share that information, discuss it. So there's a range, as Counselor Bennett was saying, several technologies that we can acquire. Part of it's going to be based on what we can afford. But I'll ask Sharie Warburg from the Parking Services to speak.
The answer is no. We do not have any ideas of what the cost would be, because the technology, it'd be very different in cost if you put in stations where every meter is right now, and that is an option that you could do versus a pay station at the end of a block. So the reason why I don't have an estimate or a range is because we don't have that, and I would feel very uncomfortable giving you that without more information. But we will be bringing that back to you.
I respect that a lot. I just, I'm just trying to wrap my hands around the cost and benefit to this, to this project. So I personally want to speak in favor of the motion. I think it's high time that Salem moved into the 21st century, and that we look at this, and we know this is not all of Salem, this is not parking for all of downtown Salem, this is a select area that already has meters in it right now. So all we're doing is replacing the technology that collects the funds from those meters. So I approve, I like it.
Counselor Bennett?
I just, thank you, Counselor Benars. I think it's really important, given email and comments I've had today, to explain one more time, this doesn't, this does not affect places, nothing. We've talked about relative to parking effects, places that don't have parking meters today.
Right.
So people who are concerned about, I'm going to pay more to shop downtown, no, you're not. It's still not going to cost you anything except higher property taxes and a loss of urban renewal funds. That'll be the, in case anyone wonders how free free parking is.
How free the parking is downtown. Okay. And I would like to interject, as sitting on, co-chairing the Parking Task Force and also talking with the city manager and staff, is that we've also asked the city to look at other options, and perhaps leasing equipment is one of those options as well. So we really want to be able to do a cost-benefit analysis of just the most cost-effective and really labor-saving, too, types of equipment that we can move toward. Secure, less labor, less vandalism, and easier for the customer to use. So, okay. We have a motion then on the floor, and it's been seconded. Any further discussion? All right, call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, that concludes the polled items, and we're now going to go to the Travel Salem Annual Report, which is the special order of business on the agenda. And I believe we have a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council.
Welcome.
Thank you for this opportunity to be here. I hope you can hear me okay. My name is Angie Morris. I'm President and CEO of Travel Salem, and it's my distinct pleasure to be here with you today to talk about our 11-12 annual report.
Did you want to introduce your guests who are here with you tonight?
I'd be happy to do that. Thank you. We have a number of board members here today. We have Mr. Dwayne Brenneman, who is a past Chair of the organization. We have Mr. Austin McQuigan, who's our current Chair of the organization, and then Debbie McKeon, who is our Director of Sales.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm going to start out with our key performance indicators. As you are probably well aware, we have three that we are measured by primarily economic impact, TOT, and leverage. We also track 85 program activities to monitor progress and adjust courses needed depending on visitor trends and market factors. Travel Salem's activities and tourism promotion support council's goal for economic development to strengthen prosperity for Salem residents and businesses. We are also working with SED Core on their marketing and PR efforts to promote Mill Creek and the Salem Renewable Energy Park. The slide before you shows economic impact for last year. The EEI increased 4% over the previous year to return to pre-recession levels. The economic impact measures both day and overnight travel. Regionally, day travel accounts for about 36% of overall EEI, so day travel is very important to our market here. Visitors made 1.73 million trips to Salem, spending $118 per day and staying an average of 2.7 nights. Travel Salem's goal is to increase not only the dollar amount spent per day, but how long visitors stay here. That's how we drive the economic impact. Transit occupancy tax was also fairly flat, but room nights, occupancy itself was up to 340,500 room nights sold. And that represents significant growth. TOT was flat, however, because of some facilities discounting their room rates. The bottom line, there were more heads and beds last year. Leverage is a measurement that we use to track how much donated products and services the organization secures to supplement the cash resources that we have. You can see that last year, we secured 3.2 million in leverage, which was up 70%, obviously an all-time high for the organization. That was primarily driven by our media exposure at 2.16 million. This also shows that we, in the report that you have before you, we were able to drive a six-to-one ratio last year. So for every $1 that we received from the City of Salem, we generated another $6.15 from other sources. Our membership program continues to grow and expand. We had 443 members last year, which was up 20%. On the convention and event side, we delivered almost $9 million in economic impact through that program, which was up 13%. We secured 57 leads that resulted in 20 bookings. And we provided services to 97 conferences and events, reaching almost 50, well, 54,000 delegates. This is a photo of our booth at the 2011 rally in Spokane to pre-promote our event in 2012 for the Northwest Tandem Rally. In June, on June 29th of 2012, we hosted 1,200 tandem riders to Salem. We partnered with the Historic Deepwood Estates Wine and Jazz Festival, where 300-plus tandem rally participants attended, which increased the overall attendance of that event for Deepwood by 30%. This is a photo of the BMW rally in another part of the country, and this event is coming to us this year. So the BMW Motorcycles of America Owners Club Rally, we'll be hosting that in July of this year at the Oregon State Fair and Expo. And we expect between 8,000 and 9,000 delegates. It took us over five years to secure this event, and so it's just persistence in keeping our market in front of these decision-makers who decide where to take these valuable events. In 2012, we attended a rally in Sedalia, Missouri, to pre-promote this event here to the delegates. Our Travel Cafe and Visitor Information Network last year served 300 and, or 137,000 visitors, which was up 12%. This is just a quick photo to show you sort of that that Travel Cafe is working in all different regards with visitors coming through. Our goal is to convert visitors into overnight stays, as I mentioned earlier, and to drive economic impact. As you can see here, these are some examples of on-the-ground how we're affecting travel. Folks from Colorado, Ohio, Czechoslovakia, and Wayrica, for instance, are just some examples of how we're trying to turn travelers coming through the area, which you'll see here, they're actually coming through Salem, going somewhere else, and how we try to work to convert them to stay here. And we have a lot of success stories like this. It's really exciting to see how that program actually works on the ground.
Road.
What's that?
Roads.
That's right. Hook 'em in. This is our Visitors' Guide. We distribute 140,000 of these each year. We fulfilled over 42,000 visitor inquiries with this guide last year, which was up 40%, and that was due to a Madden Adventurication Promotion that I'll talk about in a moment. We also sit on the Willamette Valley Visitors' Association's Board and control, help control how those monies are spent to promote this region. And so we actually spearheaded producing this Wine Country publication, which is the region's Wine Country Visitors' Guide, and we printed 120,000 of those as well. TravelSalem.com was redesigned last year, had over 185,000 visits, which was up 23%, 78% of that traffic coming from unique visitors, 77% of traffic from new users. The redesign included a customizable event search on the homepage, our interactive online map, hotel booking, social media streaming, and dynamic scrolling ads. The interactive online map was launched, and at the request of our cultural and heritage partners, they requested that something like this be developed. So we produced this really dynamic tool on our homepage, and it featured 17 cultural and heritage partners from around the region. In 10 months, it generated over 3,500-page views. These are social media channels, and I won't go into a whole lot of detail here, but we're working in the arenas of Facebook, Twitter, Flickr, and a new interest is in Pinterest. And Pinterest is a way for visitors to browse pin boards that are created by other people, and it's a fun way for them to discover new things and get inspired. And so we have our own Travel Salem Pinterest account, and we're showcasing things around here to get people interested to come and visit. Our public relations efforts were very successful last year at 2.16 million dollars in advertising equivalency, over 670 placements. This is a photo of the MaddenMediaVacationFund.com spring promotion that we did, which targeted 80,000 consumers in the U.S. and British Columbia. We fulfilled 8,377 inquiries directly from that campaign. This is the OregonWineCountry.org. This is the Willamette Valley Visitors' Association's website, and we had an agritourism itinerary on that that was featured in April. This is our 30 Things to Do Before You Turn 30 campaign that targeted millennials using the Daily Candy website. It generated a huge amount of activity and drew a lot of people to our Facebook page as well. This is the Adventurication Promotion that we partnered with Willamette Valley Visitors' Association and Travel Oregon on to promote Salem. Last year, we marketed almost 2,000 events, an average of about 166 per month. So for instance, in October, we had 330 events. That just gives you a feel for, when folks say there's not much to see and do here in Salem, there's so much to see and do here. In October alone, again, 330 events. We serviced 81 relocation inquiries last year, and here's an example from Mr. and Mrs. Cotton from Idaho, and what we were able to do for them. So the relocation work, we partner with the Salem Chamber and other groups to do that as well. So last year, we started measuring something that helps us manage and calculate the number of times consumers engage with Travel Salem, how many times it takes us to interact with the consumer to get them to act. So last year, about 49 million interactions, and that includes our media work, the social media work, the Visitors' Guide, the Travel Cafe, and all those different platforms that we're using. So our goal is to obviously get this number, see it continue to go up. This was almost double what it was the year prior. And lastly, I would just share with you that Travel Salem secured the 10th spot on the Oregon Business Magazine's 100 Best Nonprofits to Work For in Oregon. The bad news is that you have to have 10 employees to qualify for this list, and we don't have that anymore. But I would hope to think that we would continue to be on this list going forward, and, but it's a testament to how employees feel working at Travel Salem and the work that they're doing there. I want to thank you for this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down and for all the preparation and the report, and also for the other individuals who've come tonight. I apologize that it meant you had to wait so long. If we had a way of knowing and we could just call you, we could save you a time, but we just don't know how to do that. So, questions for Angie Morris from many of the counselors? Counselor Clem?
Not a question, Madam Mayor, just a comment. I reviewed the report earlier, and I just noted that, you know, it says Travel Salem, but it really is Travel Marion-Pope County, isn't it? There's even much a greater reliance on, and partnerships going on with both counties than I've seen before. Can you just describe how that strategic shift has made a difference? There's more revenue, there's more activity going on with all the cities in both counties, so.
Yeah, Counselor Clem, and that's a really great point, because it really points to the fact that tourism is, in its essence, it's about a regional approach. It's like a partnership effort. Without the region, we really have a smaller product to market. And so if we're able to leverage partners around the region to drive room nights here at Salem, that's really our goal. The 90% of the room nights, if not more, are here in Salem.
Right.
So from visitor's perspective, you know, we try to not look at geopolitical boundaries, but from what the visitor is looking at as far as a place to come and visit and explore. And so, for instance, we've found over the last several years that Wine Country is a primary driver, the impetus for travel. However, when visitors come here, they have a lot of wonderful things to do: outdoor recreation, culture and heritage, gardens, shopping, all of those wonderful things. But it creates a broad package. So by partnering with Woodburn Company Stores, for instance, or the Oregon Garden, or the Casino, Willamette Valley Vineyards, all these different partners around the region, we actually can create a destination. So a visitor has really the reason to stay here longer. So we can turn maybe a day trip into a three- or four-night trip, because there's so much to see and do here.
Sure. And then when we connect the three parks, just more to be able to attract events and people to enjoy the river in Salem.
Yeah, that will really be a signature piece for this community.
Well, I think you guys have done a great job. Our county partners talk well about Travel Salem, and, you know, it just, it sounds so nice to hear that from folks who are helping to pay for this and leverage this as an entire valley that's a destination, instead of just...
Yeah, absolutely. And those partnership dollars, particularly from the counties and our membership dollars, allow us to serve in that regional fashion. Because as you're aware, the money we receive from the city in TOT can only be spent to market businesses inside the Salem city limits. So even, for instance, Lancaster Mall, which is outside the city limits, we need to have partnership dollars to market those assets. So those, Marion County's support, Polk County's support, and all our member businesses around the region are making that possible, to expand that scope. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. Again, appreciate you coming. Appreciate you all being here tonight. All right, we're going to move on to discussions surrounding information reports, which are all in your binders or, whoops, on your laptops. And I have one item that I would like to pull and, or call it up, and that's 7D. Are there other counselors with items that you would like to bring forward?
I was going to pull the same one.
Oh, you're going to do that. Counselor Nanki?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
In regards to item 7D, being in Ward 3, I would move to call CPC ZC PAR 12-08 up for a public hearing.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by Counselor Nanki, seconded by Counselor Bennett, to move that item to a public hearing. Is there discussion? Would you like to speak to your motion?
Just in reviewing it, and I know based on our material, or our work session last week on economics and industrial lands, I thought there should be a much broader discussion in regards to an area that has a significant amount of industrial. And then a couple of concerns with comments that were received as part of that package as well.
All right.
I would like to see a little more information.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Nanki, or, excuse me, Counselor Bennett, did you?
Yeah, I'm on another.
You're on a different one. All right. Well, I'll add that I would like to, as well, have some greater discussion about the concept of moving land, moving property from industrial zone and changing it to other commercial uses, and the residential use, the high-density residential use. So we'll be setting that then for a hearing. Oh, Vicky Woods?
Do you have a date?
I don't have a date, but we'll set it at the next most convenient date for the council and the applicant.
Okay. By calling it up tonight and requesting that it be set for date, are we causing anything to delay in the process? What kind of delay maybe we be causing here?
Well, if you didn't call it up, it would become final. So... So, but it's not subject to 120-day rule. But you do create a delay in the approval of the project for the period of time it takes you to have the public hearing and make a decision.
Okay. And so, how quickly can we move this to a public hearing?
Well, we'll have to give notice. Probably, I don't know if it's a 10- or 20-day notice in this case. So, we'll have to organize it around what the required legal notice is.
All right.
We'll get it at the first agenda that we can make.
Good. Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other discussion on that? Okay. Then, it's been moved and seconded to call that to a hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to just acknowledge 7F, which is the Railroad Quiet Zone update. And I thought if it was at all possible, I'd like to have Mark Bechtel kind of tell us where we are. He has done, he and his staff have done a remarkable job. They have completed work on crossings at Mill, State Court, Chameca de Center, Marion D., Market, Madison, and Sunnyview. And this has been a project many, many, many years in the making involving numerous councils over the years. But I know for my word, this is probably the single biggest change we'll experience for some time when this occurs. That noise intrusion is so big. But I kind of like know where it is. This has been a council goal. And I know people are real excited about when Mark will turn off the whistle.
They'll be so excited, he'll drive around at night with a horn.
No, no, no.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. My name is Mark Bechtel. I'm the Parks and Transportation Services Manager. Just for the record, I don't get to turn off the horn. That would be up to each individual train engineer. But I am pleased to say that we are nearing the home stretch on the creation of a railroad quiet zone. As you can read in your staff report, the city has completed all of its contracted construction at the 10 different railroad crossings. There's only a few loose ends that need to be completed by the Union Pacific Railroad. They have until the end of March to install a few more flashers and pedestrian signage and devices. We still need to finalize a liability agreement for the Chameca crossing with Union Pacific Railroad. But we're hopeful that by March 31st, all of the construction work and paperwork will be completed for the improvements at each of those 10 crossings. In the meantime, because all of the safety work that qualifies as the supplemental safety measures for the quiet zone at the 10 crossings, that work is all completed. And we felt we were comfortable then in going ahead and submitting what we call the Notice of Intent to Establish a Railroad Quiet Zone in Salem. That notice was sent out to several different parties on January 11th. And that starts the 60-day comment clock, which means that of the parties that we sent it to, which is the Federal Railroad Administration, the Union Pacific Railroad, ODOT-Rail, Federal Highway Administration, and our own city departments, that starts a clock for comment. After 60 days, which would be March 12th, we take those comments and we have to address them. And so, during those 19 days that we have between March 12th and the end of March, when Union Pacific Railroad is supposed to be done, their improvements, we can address any of those individual comments that we may come across. And that may require some additional construction or just some other considerations or paperwork or whatever. But at that point in time, when that is done and we've addressed those issues during the comment period, the city manager will then be asked to sign what is called the Notice of Establishment, which means that in no sooner than 21 days after she signs that, and we would pick a date certain, then the railroad quiet zone would be established. So, the target for that would be the fourth week of April. So, we are indeed entering the final stretch. We are on track to get that done. One of the things I want to stress is that we met with Operation Lifesaver. And they were very concerned about what kind of efforts we're going to make to educate the public on the fact that there will no longer be horns sounding here in Salem, or at least a portion of Salem. And we assured them that we're going to do a number of things to get the word out. During that 21 days that we have to wait, we are going to work with press releases. We're going to put up signage right at the crossings warning people of when that horn-free zone will establish. We're going to work directly with North High School, Parish Middle School, Willamette University, Tokyo International, State Department Administrative Services to make sure that everybody around those crossings is fully aware of the quiet zone. And to answer your question, the school district in general will be worked with very closely. We want to make sure that the students that cross there at D., especially, are fully and fully aware of the lack of a horn that's going to sound. And again, I would stress that this is not a silent zone. It is a quiet zone. If a train engineer feels the need to sound the horn for whatever situation he or she considers imminently dangerous, they have the right to do so. There may also be some sounding south of Mill Street in and around the Amtrak station, as well as the railroad yard to the south. But we're looking at a big change in Salem within the next several months.
Excellent report. Thank you for that. Councilor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilor Bennett, when you have a party for the first quiet train, I will be there. That'll be pretty amazing.
Are we going to bring our city noise meter to test?
Maybe. I'll tell you, sitting at those soccer games at North, it's loud.
But that's happy noise.
Well, I have a couple of questions on 7C and 7E. And I apologize to staff. I meant to call today, and my day got away from me. 7C is in regards to a partition off of Mildred. My question was, I'm concerned about sidewalks and incomplete sidewalks in South Salem. When this goes forward, it's not a complete road improvement on Mildred and the existing portion that would be left as the existing home appears to be between what might be developed into more homes later on and where existing sidewalks are to the west. Can it be, or would it be, or should it be considered that part of the conditions for approval would be that at any time that the rest, or any portion of the property develops, the sidewalk would go the whole length of the existing property? I'm just concerned that otherwise, we have no teeth to ever go back and get a complete sidewalk. And we have some really bad disconnects in South Salem right now.
Yes. I think I'm going to ask Glenn Gross to answer that question, our planning administrator.
Good evening. I'm Glenn Gross, planning administrator. This is a, what's before you tonight is a simple two-lot partition, the purpose of which is just to separate the existing house from the remainder of the property. At some point in the future, if the property owner, when and if the property owner decides to develop that remainder of the property, that will be subject to another land use review and subdivision. And at that time, as a condition of approval, improvements, including sidewalks, could be required.
That being said, if I understand your concern correctly, that by partitioning off this piece that will probably never be developed or won't be developed for a long time, do we leave a gap in that sidewalk until something may happen in the far future with that parcel? I think the answer to that is yes.
Is it possible that an outcome of this could have been or could be if we called it up to put a condition on that? Is that possible to condition in such a way?
We don't have a code requirement that requires that. I don't think that you would be able to do that. I think what you need to do is to change the standard about when sidewalks are required.
If we could, I don't want to call it up and waste everybody's time. If we could, don't even have the grounds.
It wouldn't. I don't think that you would get to where you want to get in doing that anyway.
I'd be interested in what Councilor Bennett's comment is.
Councilor Bennett?
Just, I just want to follow up on this because I've heard, I think we'd all have heard about this. We've seen examples of it. If we don't partition it, what happens?
If we don't approve this partition?
Right. There's a house that's developed on property. Won't they have to put in the sidewalk or not?
No. If you don't partition it, nothing would happen.
Nothing happens.
Right.
If you partition it, nothing happens. That's our problem.
Right. 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 The dilemma is that you get a large piece of property and it's got one house on it. And the owner of that property decides they want to keep that one house and live there for whatever reason. But they want to develop the other bunch of property around them. And so, that development comes in around it and that subdivision gets developed. It has a sidewalk in front of it. But the piece that was partitioned off to begin with, there's no development trigger in that case.
Yeah. So, there are, Mayor, if I may, there are a couple of options here. One is, there are, and I don't want to misstate, we have a 250-foot rule. So, if you are within 250 feet of a completion, you know, it looks like the frontage here would be 172 feet. You know, if a development came in, we may be able to require the person developing the bigger parcel to put in the sidewalk. So, that's one tool that we have. The other tool that we have, that we actually have never used, is in the code, when there are missing gaps in streets, we can actually require the property owner to put in the missing gap in sidewalks. And is that true for vertigos or just local streets, Mark?
I think it's true of all streets. Oh, so this might be too new. There may be a couple of opportunities here that we would, you know, that we could get the sidewalk in, understanding that, you know, South Salem is riddled with missing...
And we will be riddled with more if we don't make...
Missing segments.
I need to clarify too. I'm sorry. I misspoke. They're not creating two lots here. There are already two lots on this property. They're just reconfiguring the boundary of those lots.
I misunderstood. So, we have even less grounds to do anything like that? Okay.
Yep. I think the grounds would come, if I may, when the next land use decision comes, which would be a subdivision, that would be the time to create a requirement for the missing sidewalk. And we could do that as part of a subdivision.
Well, I'm definitely really interested in that. And I've had discussions with, I know with you, Peter, and with you, Vicky, about how do we move this forward with trying to keep these completions? And it's just, it's a conundrum out there. And it's hard to, it's hard to see it go again. So, anyway, thank you. I'm interested in that. So, I don't see a reason to pull this. It doesn't sound like I could get where I wanted to be even if I did.
But we're aware of the issue and will, you know, we're cognizant of that as, you know, as I'm sure very soon, we will start to see subdivisions again.
Yeah, I think we will sooner than we don't think, actually. It's hard to find a good house out there.
Councilor Clem, you had your hand up. No, you've decided not.
And I had another question, if I may.
Yes, all right.
On 7E, this is the one with the property that's realigning Reed Road, where it joins into Wiltsey. I wasn't clear from the drawings, and I don't know if it was a resolution issue. What happens to the old Reed Road? I know there's a connection off of Wiltsey down to Limestone that, you know, from the south. What happens where, you know, after Reed dives off to the west at Soapstone?
There is a, there's a piece of Reed that remains. And I believe if you look at some of the drawings, the piece that's off of, I can't read the name of the street there. Oh, off of Wiltsey. It comes off and it curves into...
Limestone.
Limestone. And then, I think the other piece is ultimately up for vacation or removal. Do you see how it lays out?
I don't see what you're talking about. I'm sorry. I don't see what you're talking about.
Yeah, if you look at, if you look at the drawings, well, probably the easiest one to look at is when the drawings start in the packet, just the...
Yes. On the back of page 15?
The first drawing that has a site plan.
Yeah.
So, if you see along Wiltsey here, you see that Reed comes in, Old Reed comes in and curves into Limestone. And then, the remainder of Old Reed would be removed.
Yeah. And that's one thing, I know the neighbors had talked to me originally a long time ago about, well, what happens to Reed? Does it go to the neighbors? Does it go to the property? Does it get split between them? Do they have to buy it?
So, that is, yeah, so that is, that is subject to state law. And when the council, if we choose to, if the council chooses to vacate the right-of-way, then it goes back to the parent. So, wherever it came from, it will go back to. Yeah. So, and at this point, I can't tell you where Reed came from. But it will go back to its parent parcel.
So, there's not a picture coming from the north on Reed before you get into where it diverts? There's not a driveway going to that easterly section of apartments off of Reed? It's really hard to see in that drawing.
The first driveway, there is, there's a driveway right as Reed starts to a curve heading south. There is a driveway there. And I seem to recall that there was a first phase that had a driveway off of existing Reed that then will be incorporated into new Reed.
Right. So, there's not one, when you're headed south, there's not a driveway that heads off to the east? That's what was really hard to see in all the grade lines and...
Yeah. So, again, in the, in the, in the, the site plan that we were pointing to before, there is a driveway that shows, that it could be a temporary driveway into the property, the, kind of the phase to the north, that then would be incorporated into the new street.
Do we have something that we can put up on the screen?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't realize there was going to be questions. We didn't bring anything.
You can see it on the site plan, how the driveway would come off of existing Reed. And then, new Reed would go over that driveway. So, it'd be that the driveway is developed would go over the future right-of-way.
So, there's not a driveway from Reed headed south? There's not a driveway that goes along the back of the existing neighbor's property line to get to that north parking?
No, no, no. When it's ultimately developed, everything is off of the new Reed.
Okay. So, to get into the parking lot by the northerly apartments, you would be coming off of Reed closer to Wiltsey.
That's on the south.
Sorry. You're right.
Oops, he's on the south.
I was upside down. On the southerly, yeah, I know. On the southerly side, you'd be approaching. It's just really hard to see because it's really, really grainy.
Well, there's, the contour lines are on there, and that's what makes it difficult.
Well, and then the scan is led to something to be deserved. It's probably been scanned four or five times.
Probably. Mr. Fernandez, are you saying that the new Reed Road then actually avoids Soapstone? Or it actually does go, you can go from Reed Road from the north and then turn left or east to get to Soapstone?
Yeah, yeah, Soapstone.
And then coming from the south, you'd come on the new Reed Road, or what is this called? Madras Road? I can't read it. Madras?
Right, right, he hasn't labeled this Madras.
So then you'd turn left on Madras, and you'd come, and that's a regular through street? A new city street?
That is Reed, right.
Oh, okay.
That is Reed.
Okay.
So Reed curves and...
All right, and then you'd come up to Soapstone and turn right to go to Soapstone.
That's right, you can just, right, Soapstone, it's back to its existing alignment right at Soapstone.
I see, okay.
I think I have a better way of posing my question, Mr. Fernandez, on the, is there a driveway access to the east of the detention basin on the north side of those apartments that's right next to Soapstone, or Reed, realigned Reed?
No.
Okay, there's not a driveway there?
No.
Okay, sorry, that's the part that was so hard to read, and I was a little bit concerned if that was.
Looks like it goes into that back parking lot and comes all the way down.
Right, otherwise, I will make one comment about this. This is a very clean fix to a very messy spot in South Salem. That Reed Road, that, there's a house up there right next to Limestone that's been graffiti'd two or three times, sidewalk all down the side, and it's, they weren't required to put sidewalk in, and Reed Road was not a road right there, so this is really awkward. So I'm glad to see something going forward that I think will be clean there, and I was just a little bit concerned about a drive access down there on that north side of that parking lot, so.
So do you, Mr. Fernandez, do you anticipate some kind of a traffic signal, or would there just be a stop sign at Soapstone, for instance?
Oh, that's just a stop sign.
Just a stop sign? You don't anticipate that this Reed Road would eventually have that much...
I don't anticipate any of these intersections to be signaled.
Even with the increased traffic from all of the apartments and everything? Okay. All right, were there any other questions on this item? Counselor Benars?
Just a point of clarification, this is Reed Lane, not Reed Road. And it has nothing to do with Reed Road.
Okay.
Just don't want to get the two confused.
That's right. The word Reed Road.
You're right, thank you. Yes, Counselor Clem?
Just a comment or a question, if there's a way to show these without the contour lines electronically, could we start doing that? All of the diagrams I've looked at tonight have been hard to read, so...
Or if nothing else, a clean scan.
Do we have to show it this way, Ms. Woods? Well, we would have to require that they submit extra copies without the contours. We could do that.
But we could do that.
Well, if I may...
Counselor Claussen?
If I may, I actually find the contour lines real helpful, because they actually help you to see the grade, but I think the problem is, you know, maybe on something like this, if it's been scanned five or six times, in the new staff record part, maybe we could get a clean scan included as part of that, or something. It's just hard to see, that was where my questions were coming from.
We'll work on trying to make the maps better. Actually, I think they come in this form sometimes.
Oh, really?
Yes, so part of that is our drawing, a harder line about what we allow someone to submit to us as an acceptable map.
Take the roll, stick it on a copier, and then make copy, and then stick it back in and PDF it.
All right, were there any further comments or questions regarding information reports? All right, thank you. We'll move to ordinances. Excuse me. And would the recorder please read, please introduce the first ordinance?
Ordinance Bill Number 113 relating to freestanding signs, amending SRC 900.075.
No.
This is for later.
All right, and is there motion, Counselor, it looks like Counselor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move staff recommendation.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to move staff recommendation. Is there a discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. And would you please, with the city recorder, please introduce the second ordinance?
Ordinance Bill Number 513 relating to the Broadway High Street overlay zone, amending SRC 138.030.
Counselor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler. Is there discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed say nay. Motion carries, thank you. Can I ask when that hearing would be set? Just so people have an idea, if you know.
We haven't scheduled the hearing date yet.
I see, okay. All right, and then we have one item, two items for second reading. Would the recorder please introduce the second reading and take the roll?
Glenn Gross, Ordinance Bill Number 1312 relating to fences, amending SRC 131.120 and creating new provisions. Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Claussen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey is absent?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson?
Aye.
Ordinance Bill Number 313.
Ordinance passes, thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Jumped the gun there. Ordinance Bill Number 313 declaring a certain territory located at 1189 Reese Hill Road Southeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Claussen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey is absent. Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Benars?
Aye.
Counselor Clem?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson? Aye. Unanimously passes the annexation, thank you very much. We have one individual who signed up this evening for public comment, and that is Gail Hooper. Is Gail Hooper still present? Hello, thank you. Please come to the podium and introduce yourself, you have three minutes. At the end of, two minutes, the amber light comes on, and when the red light comes on, your three minutes is up.
Thank you. Thank you. I've watched that enough times.
That's all right.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you for listening to me. My name is Gail Hooper, and for the record, I live at 3109 Brown Road Northeast, Salem, Oregon 97305. Tonight I represent the women at the Well Grace House, we're a women's shelter, we're a nonprofit organization, we're two years old this month, and miraculously, we're going to have a ribbon cutting and opening the shelter, or a ribbon cutting next month. Madam Mayor attended our last dinner, thank you very much, that was in October, and we would be absolutely honored if you would come and cut the ribbon for us.
Well, thank you very much. When you get a date, let me know.
The date is?
Oh, all right.
Sunday.
Boy, she's not going to miss a beat, all right. The date is?
Sunday, February 24th.
Okay.
At 2:00.
Thank you.
Y'all are invited. I hope you come, we're excited. We'll be housing adult females without dependents, they're the hardest to place in Salem. Currently, or last January's count, we were at 282 female homeless people, that includes couch surfers, et cetera, but 282. We're going to house up to nine women for the long run, is six months at a time, so we can, and our goal, we're called the Grace House, and our goal is to change their way of thinking, to pull them out of the thought patterns and the self-destructive patterns that they've been living under, for whatever reason, and to change them in a manner that when they leave, that they, it will change their life, and at the very least, to pull them out of the street, into a new way of thinking.
Wonderful, well, I'm very happy to know about the ribbon cutting and the work that you've been doing.
That's all I had.
Thank you. I think we have some questions from councilors, Counselor Nanki and then Counselor Clem.
Thank you, and thank you for coming down. Your group actually spoke to the Morningside Neighborhood Association at their last meeting, was very well received as well.
Oh, good.
And we're looking forward to continuing communications to see how everything's, you know, going over time. But there was a lot of support.
Thank you. And Counselor Clem?
Yes, and Gail's been known for toughening it out for many years. Retired how many years from the military, Sergeant Hooper?
Just two months shy, that's a retired, just, thank you, Councilwoman, just two months shy of 26 years I have in the, I had in the military, and so...
Still serving.
And then I got a state job, so, and now I'm doing this, so, anyway. So, and I'm just, I'm, we're, I'm just a steward, and it's miraculously, this house is just coming right along, and so we're so excited. There are, there were females, there were homeless females out right before our dinner, and they were advertising for our dinner, because they want this thing to be open, and so there's a lot of excitement about this, thank you.
Thanks for serving.
Well, that's wonderful, that's wonderful. Thanks for the work you're doing there, and thanks for your service in the military as well. That's a long time to serve, and we appreciate that service. Counselor Thomas has her hand up.
The date for the ribbon cutting is February 24th, it's a Sunday afternoon at 2:00, we're hoping it doesn't rain. I'm so sorry, thank you. The address is, and it's in South Salem, it's at 1243 and 1245 Peace Street, because it's a duplex.
Is it, did you say Peace?
Peace, as in P-E-A-C-E, ma'am.
Thank you. Wonderful, thanks for coming down tonight. Thanks for waiting so long to be able to give your comment. Thank you. All right.
It's interesting, all right.
I don't believe that we have any further business, no mayor's motions or councilor's motions, and we are adjourned.